Turn on my mic. We are calling this appeals meeting to order at 6:11 PM. Call room? Yes, here?
Vice Mayor Santin?
Here.
Councilman Dion?
Here.
Councilman Perez Crespo?
Here.
There is a quorum present, and for the record, Councilman Lamas is absent today.
Okay, so I guess we're going to stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, you may be seated. Okay, so we are opening up for a public comment. Is there any? No one? No one signed up? No one online? All right, so we close public comments, and we move on to the public hearing appealed by Michelle Ferreira to the Board of Appeals of Resolution Number 4280 relating to 200 North Espinade Drive.
Sure. Mayor, good evening, mayor and council. For the record, Heidi Sarah, City Attorney. Tonight, we have a Board of Appeals meeting, and I just want to make some introductory remarks because we don't normally sit in this capacity. So this evening's, I'll start with some history of how we got here, and then I will allow the parties to begin their presentations. So in November of 2024, Ms. Ferreira, who is considered an applicant and appellate under our code, she's the owner of the property located at 300 Falcon Avenue. She filed an appeal to the city's Board of Adjustment pursuant to a specific section of our city code challenging an administrative determination that had been made relating to setbacks at a neighboring property located at 200 North Espinade Drive. She, at that time, requested that the city revoke a building permit that had been issued for 200 North Espinade and issue a stop work order to enjoin the improvements proposed by the owners of that North Espinade property. In February, so about three months later, the city's Board of Adjustment held a hearing, and after a hearing much like the one that you're going to sit through this evening, they issued a recommendation to the city council, which you all considered in your capacity as city council members, on April 28th of this year. Ms. Ferreira filed a notice of appeal on May 5th of this year, and that's why we are here this evening. Today is June 30th, and we're here to hear her appeal. You will be sitting as, you will be hearing evidence. You have a very large agenda, as you know. The agenda is about 1,500 pages long, and it includes everything from Ms. Ferreira's original letter appealing the decision of the administrative official to all of the evidence that was presented to the Board of Adjustment, as well as the transcript of that hearing, and any evidence that was introduced during the hearing, as well as some case law and things from both sides that were submitted into evidence. This evening, we do have a court reporter here. He is transcribing everything that is happening. There's nothing, so to speak, off the record. So we have microphones. Everything that's being said is going on that record, and we also have our team from the city recording like we have for normal city council meetings. So with that, I guess we'll allow Ms. Ferreira and her counsel, Mr. Machado, to make their presentations. I know that there were some plans for tonight's hearing, and there was a distinction in what we thought was going to be happening in the process. So I want to make clear for everyone that tonight, we, at the request of the applicant and appellate, we are hearing the case sort of what we call as lawyers in a de novo capacity. So you are hearing the case, you are considering the evidence, you have the benefit of having the transcript and the evidence that was already presented, and that is what we will be utilizing this evening. And with that, I don't think there's anything further I need to say.
Thank you, Madam City Attorney. My name is Christopher Machado. I'm an attorney with Acreman LLP. For the record, 98 Southeast 7th Street, Suite 1100, Miami, Florida, 33131. I'm joined by Michelle Ferreira, our client and the appellate. She is my law partner at Acreman. She practices transactional real estate law. And we're also joined by Henry Eiler, AICP certified expert planner, who will be speaking with you shortly. If, Ms. Gonzalez, you could load our presentation, and I think I'll need the clicker to go through
And while we're doing that, I just want to make a note for the agenda. There was a resolution that was included in your agenda packet. It has been updated. We're getting copies to share with you all. It's, the resolution title remains the same, but some of the information within it has changed just to update the type of hearing we're having this evening.
All right, and we're off. So thank you for being with us. I'd like to show you an aerial of the site here. The corner property is 200 North Espinade. The one to the left of it is Michelle's property, 300 Falcon. This is an aerial of around 2007, I believe. And you can see that the corner property has an L-shaped house with a structure at the back that has a series of lines, and you'll see that if we go through this, that was an accessory screened-in patio. But you can tell here, you can appreciate the amount of green space behind the Espinade property closest to the Falcon property. Having an issue with the clicker? I'm sorry about this. Yeah, it's a little slow. All right, so we'll go to the next slide, please. Oh, those were all my clicks. They finally landed. Yep. Number two, yep. All right, so this image is much later in time. Now we have the Espinade property with a substantial addition, a new roof line that is much, much closer to the Falcon property. That is the subject of this appeal, how close they have built to the property line, how little separation there is between the two properties. So comparison, 2007, lots of green space, more appropriate setback, 2024, right up against the property line. This shows you a view from Espinade, and you can see and you can appreciate how close these two houses are now, and how little separation there is. All right, so some of the relevant history here. So we have two lots initially. You see lots one and two. It's 100 by 150, and those two lots end up being two distinct lots that are subdivided across the middle. They're bisected to create a new lot fronting on Falcon and to leave the corner property with a house at the corner, creating two separate lots. Yeah, I think we might need to change the batteries here. We're going way too.
Honestly, I thought you were just leaving for dramatic effect.
No dramatic effect. I am trying to, I'm trying to speed through this, trust me. All righty, so here we go. So the little turquoise rectangle on the left, that's the house. This is a rough sketch, just for illustrative purposes, as to how the original house was built in the 40s. Then we have a subdivision that cuts across the two lots to create the Falcon property. And you can see, based on what's shown on the right, the original structure faced Espinade, and it was one long, two long lots, all the way to the end of the alley, that were cut across to create two separate lots, and at that point Falcon, 300 Falcon became its own lot in the 80s. Let's try, yeah, let's try another clicker.
Does that have a laser pointer?
It might, yeah.
Can I ask that you please use it? We're all looking this way. If you please use it, because you're talking about things and it's hard to follow.
Sure, we can certainly use it. So just to go back briefly, I mean, here it's obvious what house we're talking about. Right, here we go. Here are the two lots, right? We have those two lots over here, right? These two lots. And then they go from Espinade to the alley in the back, so we go from here to the back. And then later on, you'll see, as we go through these documents, that the lots are subdivided across the center, that line there, to create two new lots. At the time that this subdivision occurs in the 80s, the 200 North Espinade property, the corner lot, this little turquoise house here, complied with the setback requirements. That is confirmed by your staff. They analyzed it, and they said that house complied. There was no issue at that time. What happens is, in the 1980s, in 1984, the applicant applies for what is known as a waiver of plat. They wanted to create two lots to allow the part of the back part of the property over here to be its own lot and to build a new house on it. This is in 1984. So in August of 83, the property owner applies to the building official and says, I'd like to create a new lot. How can I go about doing that? Dave Wells, at that time, was a building official and the person responsible for zoning matters at the city of Miami Springs. He issues a letter discussing what needs to be done. He, in fact, issues a series of letters we'll get through, and he includes in these letters the need to ensure that the house at the corner is not rendered non-conforming. All right? So here we have the request in August of 83, and he says, you must make sure that you get reverse frontage for 300 Falcon to create a new lot. You have to submit surveys, pay improvement property taxes, and requesting a new lot for purposes of constructing one new single-family dwelling. So the owner requests reverse frontage to create the Falcon Avenue lot, and we're off into the application process. So this is important, and we'll come back to it. The property owner requested reverse frontage for only 300 Falcon Avenue. And reverse frontage means you had frontage on Espinade, that was the front of the house. Now you want to reverse it as to the new lot to build a house on 300 Falcon facing Falcon Avenue. In 1983, September 13th, Dave Wells issued an additional letter, and he says, there is, at the rear of the house, an accessory, non-conforming, could be a non-conforming accessory building. We have to make sure that in approving this subdivision, there must be no condition that creates a non-conforming improvement situation, right? You cannot render that house non-conforming. That's not allowed. Since the structure at the rear seems to be only of an accessory value, please remove them to a line that will yield 10% on the side, 25 feet in the rear, as a description for setbacks. So he was very clear, you must remove part of the structure that is encroaching to allow for accurate setbacks. So this is the structure we're talking about. So one-story CBS. It's closest to the Falcon property, and you can see this is the main house here. So keep in mind that structure at the back of the Espinade house. Just for reference, you can see at that time, this was in August of 83, down here, that time, the separation between the structure and the Falcon property lot was minimal, if So in June of 84, June 18th, 1984, Dave Wells issues an additional letter, and he says, please be advised that prior to issuing a waiver of plat to allow subdivision, 200 North Espinade must show a front setback of 30 feet, a rear setback of 25 feet, and 10% side setbacks. The letter has a description line of owner's plan for achieving proper setbacks. That was the purpose of this. He wanted to clarify the procedure to make sure that when the subdivision occurred, there were proper setbacks. So as we detailed at the Board of Adjustment process, Dave Wells came up with alternatives for setback compliance. And those alternatives stem from two different sections of your code, which were the same back then. which were the same back then as they are today. The definition of front of lot, here on the left, the definition of front yard on the right. If we start with the definition on the right, "A front yard is a yard extending across the front of a lot and being the minimum horizontal distance between the front lot line and the nearest part of the main building. On corner lots, the front yard shall be considered as adjacent to the street upon which the lot has its least dimension." So when interpreting the definition of front yard, you must reference the definition of front of lot, which is to your left. And that describes it as for corner lots, "The lot front shall be the narrowest portion of butting the street, unless determined otherwise by the planning and zoning director." That is the crux of this entire case. We will show you that in 1984, as a condition of approving the waiver of plat, the building official, who at the time, and this is already in evidence, at the time was the zoning director, determined that if you wanted to keep the house at the corner of 200 North Esplanade, you had to leave it in a way that it did not create a non-conforming setback situation, and that meant treating the front of the house as the front of the lot. And we will show you through illustrations shortly what that would look like. So, again, these are the old code sections. The same provisions existed back then, nothing has changed. The setback requirement at the time, 30 feet in the front, 10% on the side interior, 15 feet on the side street, 25 feet in the rear. All of it is as it is today. Accessory structures in the rear required a five-foot rear setback, same as it is today. So here we have handwritten notes from Dave Wells in 84, and he says, "You have two options, okay? You can treat Falcon as the front for the corner house, you can treat Esplanade as the front for the corner house. Either way, you have to make some adjustments, because the way that it existed back then, you couldn't just simply cut the lot across the middle and leave the house with the accessory building as is. You had to make adjustments, and those adjustments were either cut off the main house to achieve proper setbacks or to demolish the accessory building." And we will show you, they opted to demolish the accessory building. "Any deviation from this plan will require variances, subject to board and council approval." Dave Wells made that very clear. If you can't achieve proper setbacks, you have to get variances. So here we have, it's the same sketch on both sides, but I'm just blowing up a little bit on the right so you can see it better. This is, again, a handwritten annotated plan by Dave Wells, and he has the house showing a 25-foot setback across the back. You see his dashed line, and we'll show it more clearly on a different plan. And then an X at the back of the, back of the house, an X is on that accessory building. And we have testimony from the Board of Adjustment that those Xs mean that had to be removed if you wanted to treat Falcon as the front. And here again, we have the 25-foot dashed line, the arrow here showing that is the 25-foot setback at the rear of the house if you treat Esplanade as the front. And again, the accessory building, as you can see, would be in that rear setback. So in June 20th, 84, Dave Wells issues an additional letter, and again, he confirms the same thing here. "If you want to do this subdivision, you have to have minimum setbacks, front yard 30, rear yard 25, 15 on the side of the house facing Falcon Avenue." Side of the house, Falcon Avenue. 10-foot setback on the south side of the house, which is the other opposite side. "No building permit can be issued until all encroachments into the above-described setback areas have been removed." This is just a blow-up of those provisions. Again, focus on 15-foot setback on the side of the house facing Falcon Avenue. Very clearly, Wells determined that side, Falcon Avenue, was a side setback, not a front setback, which implies that the side closest to Michelle's property was the rear setback requiring 25 feet of separation. And here we have a memo from the city attorney in July 23rd, 1984, where he clearly states, "The subdivision through a waiver of plat is supported by our court of ordinances, which allows for the re-subdivision of property without the necessity of plating so long as certain specific conditions are met." These are your code sections from back then. It shows very clearly, "In lieu of recording of a plat, such conditions may be imposed as may be deemed necessary and appropriate to preserve the public interest." We have argued and have supported it through evidence at the prior hearing that the conditions attached to this waiver of plat included maintaining those setbacks. And Wells was very clear throughout this process, you have to maintain the setbacks. So this is the companion permit document that we want you to consider, Building Permit B-415. It is for the partial demolition of accessory building and rear yard structures to provide setbacks. Submitted in 1984, it was around the same time as a waiver of plat. And very clearly, the owner at that time opted to treat Esplanade as a front, and they opted to demolish only part of the accessory building. They did not opt to demolish the house. Prior city staff memo unfortunately did not notice that it's rear, rear yard structures, very clear, rear yard structures. They interpreted to mean area yard structures, but that has been clarified in the record. And that's important, because it was very clearly in the rear yard. Here we have an affidavit supporting the demolition application, demo accessory building. And that is what we're talking about, the accessory building at the rear of that house. We can leave it there if you'd like to see it. Okay. So in October of 84, we have a letter saying, "Well, now that we've demolished the accessory building in part, all of the requirements have been satisfied, and the lots have been re-subdivided into two buildable lots measuring 75 by 100 feet." So a brief timeline, building official in 83 makes clear you cannot create a non-conformity, and the accessory structures must be removed to provide a rear setback. June of 84, building official identifies conditions, including required setbacks. September of 84, the accessory rear yard structure is demolished to satisfy the plat conditions and to provide conforming rear yard setbacks. And in October of 84, we have this letter, where the building official formally confirms the waiver of plat has been approved. This is an excerpt of the survey that the applicant submitted with their current application. It shows there is about 6.29 feet of separation from the Falcon property line, Michelle's property line, to their house that is consistent with maintaining a five-foot setback, rear setback requirement for an accessory structure. And so if you, under our theory, Esplanade is the front, their setbacks work. They have 30 feet in the front, 15 feet in the side street, more than 10 feet in the interior side, at least 25 feet in the rear. Our theory, everything checks out, all of it is in green. The city's theory is a little different. Their theory, they do not have 30 feet in the front. If they treat Falcon as the front, they only have 15 feet. They do not have 25 feet in the rear, they only have 13.8 feet. So yes, they comply with side setbacks, they do not have conforming front or rear setbacks, and it's even a question whether they conform with this setback, because that accessory structure at some point was made part of the house. That seems to have been an illegal addition. But anyway, focus on the comparison. Ours, you treat Esplanade as the front, everything is in green, everything checks out. Their theory, they have at least two or three violations that they cannot explain. This is an illustrative drawing to show you what we're talking about, okay? We also have the, mounted on a board over here to your right. This is our theory, Esplanade is the front. Area in green is your front setback, areas in yellow are your side setbacks, area in purple is your rear setback. So your buildable area under our theory is the white box in the middle, and as you can see, the house is within that white box, with the exception of the accessory structure in the rear, which is supposed to maintain only a five-foot setback, and it complies. The city's theory, well, under the city's theory, the white box in the middle becomes more of a square, because now you can build more into the sides, because you're changing the frontage. So their side setbacks are fine, the house is not inside any of the yellow. But their front setback is completely non-conforming. It cuts into the front, you have to have 30 feet, they only have 15, and they cut into the rear, they're supposed to have 25, they only have 13.86. So under our theory, it checks out, it fits. Under the city's theory, it does not fit within that white buildable area. To show you where we got this from, this is a plan, same plan we were looking at earlier. We just changed the orientation so that it matches Falcon at the bottom. You see here, Dave Wells, all these Xs, that had to be removed if you wanted to treat Falcon as the front. That X at the back, that had to be removed if you wanted to treat Falcon as the front. That did not happen. They opted to treat Esplanade as the front, they did not want to remove those parts of the house. Why is this important? Well, we have a project data sheet that the applicant submitted, probably through their architect or through their surveyor or somebody, where they put these different standards, setback standards, and then they put what we're providing. Of course, they're treating here Falcon as the front. So instead of saying, "Well, we're deficient as to these different setbacks that, as we've shown you, they have various deficiencies," instead they said, "No, no, these are existing conditions approved." But there is no approval for any of those existing conditions. And as Henry Eiler will testify shortly, to get an approval for a deviation from the setback, you must get a variance. There's no other process you could get. The building official cannot approve a deviation into the setbacks, cannot approve encroachments into the setbacks to this extent. You must go to the Board of Adjustment and get a variance. That did not happen. So this existing condition approved in the applicant's data sheet is just invented. There's no support for that anywhere in the record. What is a non-conformity? Well, a non-conforming use or structure has to exist lawfully at some point in time. And it has to be rendered non-conformity, rendered non-conforming by the passage of some subsequent zoning change. You cannot, again, as Henry will testify shortly, you cannot just simply create a non-conformity and then say, "Oh, so sorry, I now have this situation that is a hardship." And your code is very clear, Section 150-092A4 says, "A non-conforming structure that was erected, converted, or structurally altered in violation of the provisions of this ordinance, which this chapter supersedes, shall not be validated by the adoption of this chapter. And the violations or any violations of this chapter may be ordered removed or corrected by the proper officials at any time." What does that mean? When an ordinance passes and there's new setback requirements, that does not validate something that happened before it. It must exist lawfully to be a non-conforming structure, otherwise it is illegal. This is from the Case Law on Point, "Zoning regulations and providing for non-conforming structures and uses look forward to the eventual elimination of all non-conforming structures and uses as speedily as is consistent with proper safeguards for the rights of those persons affected." Separate case, the law views the extension or enlargement of non-conformities with disfavor. It is expected that such uses will gradually be eliminated over the course of time through abandonment, destruction, or obsolescence." And here we have the Florida Planning Officials Handbook, which again makes clear, "The applicant cannot bring the burden upon himself or herself through some action, but instead had the burden imposed upon them. Variances should not be non-conforming, nor should it be used to allow a non-conforming land use or parcel to continue." And more importantly, it advises planning officials in Florida, "Remember, for a legal, non-conforming situation to occur, the use or lot must be non-conforming and legal at the time the zoning ordinance was first adopted or later amended. Anything else is a zoning violation." So, if we go back, these existing condition approved, what happened here is, the applicant or its consultants basically said, "We have deficiencies, but we're going to treat them as having been approved." There is no approval, it cannot be legally protected. It is unlawful to treat Falcon as the front and yet leave these conditions, these deficiencies, on this chart as if they were simply approved. That did not happen. One other important thing to consider, and Henry will speak about this shortly too, they could very easily, in 2023, 24, when they opted to renovate their house, they could very easily have said, "You know what? We don't want to be constrained by this limited buildable area. We don't want to have to build within this area. It doesn't leave us sufficient space for our needs." What they could have done is say, "We're going to demolish this existing house, and we're going to build a new house with the front on Falcon, and that would give us the ability to build within this rectangular or square area and would fit our needs better." They had every right to choose to demolish the house and build a new one, but when they chose to keep the existing house, they necessarily chose to be constrained by these different setbacks that apply once the front of the house is on Esplanade. They could have also built a second story, which they opted not to do. What they can't do is what they've done. They cannot choose to treat Falcon as the front to then get the additional white buildable area while leaving these structures within the setbacks. They're having their cake and they're eating it too. They're saying, "We want the more generous Falcon Avenue treatment, and we're going to leave these encroachments into the setbacks as if nothing happened, as if they were simply approved by some miracle." That doesn't check out. Some other things to consider here. The owner of the Esplanade property have, they have admitted in their application, throughout their plans, that the addition they have built is in their rear yard. This is from a site plan. "Front yard, square feet, green area, facing Esplanade." "Front yard, facing Esplanade." "Proposed addition being added to the rear of the residence." That's in their scope of work. Throughout the plans, "Existing rear structure to be removed, existing rear concrete block structure wall to be removed." "Existing concrete driveway for four cars at front yard." And throughout it, again, their elevations even treat the side facing Falcon, facing Michelle's property as the rear, and the side facing Esplanade as the front. Why does this matter? Okay? We have setbacks in the city to protect light air, to protect privacy. Michelle will speak to this, why it affects her, why it's so important. Our case law is clear, it may be that these property owners would like to build a new house that is more aesthetically pleasing, that it fits their need. Courts have said that's not sufficient. "It is conceivable that the structure erected may be so artistically perfect that it is an asset to the community. Yet the plaintiff demands the open space, which is important to one addicted to Florida air and sunshine." And here we have more than that. We have privacy concerns, we have flooding concerns, we have fire and life safety concerns, all of that matters. And again, all of a sudden, we have some invention that there are approvals of setback encroachments. That's not true, it cannot be, and the law will not approve any governmental action adversely affecting the rights of others, which is based on no more than the fact that those who support it have the power to work their will. You must comply with the law. I'd like to turn it over to Henry Eiler, our expert planner, to give a brief summary of his opinion on this case. And I will leave on the screen this diagram while he walks through his opinion. Thank you. Well, we could turn it off while he's testifying, that's fine, yeah. Sure, why not? All right, thank you. All right, so, Mr. Eiler, could you please just briefly state your name, address for the record, and also summarize your expertise or years of experience in planning and zoning matters?
Yes, my name is Henry Eiler, I'm a professional planner, urban planner. My address is 820 Arthur Goffrey Road, 301 is my suite. Miami Beach, 334140. I've been a professional planner since 1979. I worked for 10 years for Miami-Dade County as a planner in both their planning department as well as their transportation agency, and finishing up at their Development Impact Committee. In 1992, I became planning director of Martin County for four years. And in that, in that mode, I was in charge of doing their comprehensive plan as well as in charge of any plan amendments and things of that nature. After that, I was hired by James Duncan Associates, who is a nationwide planning firm, and I handled all of their planning business in Florida. Actually, the firm was based in Texas. And so I started working with them and have done a number of plans for cities throughout Southeast Florida, just to name a few. Boynton Beach, Miami Gardens, City of Fort Lauderdale, Miami Lakes, Florida City, Homestead, and a number of others.
Thank you, Henry, Mr. Eiler. Is it fair to say that you are intimately familiar with rules regarding setbacks, variances, and plating?
Yes, I do a lot of site plan reviews for cities where we deal with zoning codes, setbacks, things of that nature, height, all those kinds of factors.
And have you had occasion to review the facts at issue in this particular case and render an opinion?
Yes, I have.
Would you mind just summarizing briefly your opinion as to the facts of this case?
Should I read the opinion or?
If you'd like to give a short statement describing the more fundamental aspects of it, I think the opinion's already in the record, but simply, yeah.
Okay, sounds good. I have several exhibits, but I guess the key, the key aspect of this goes back to the, to the 1984 letter from the building official where he laid out those six requirements that you saw on the screen. The two that were most relevant to me as I was going through this were the minimum setbacks that he set. Of course, he had the two alternatives, but the one that was chosen provided the setbacks that you've seen here, 30 feet in the front, front being Espinade, the rear 25 feet next to my client's property, side setback on Falcon, which is a corner setback, 15 feet, which is very normal, and the south side setback of 10 feet. And all the encroach, and all the encroachments, Mr. Wells said, had to be removed prior to the issuance of a building permit for a new house on the interior Falcon lot. I won't go through all the, all the aspects that have been, that have, that have been shown to you so far, but I will go that, go to the fact that, I'll go down here. In 1977, the city adopted Code Section 150002C18E stating that corner lots, the front lot shall be the narrowest portion of budding the street unless determined by the planning and zoning director. You saw that on the screen as well. In 1984, this code provision was in effect, and the building official at the time determined the front of the subject lot was on North Espinade Drive, as had it been since 1947. The professionals preparing the building plans also recognized the logical front and rear yards of the house. The electrical plumbing and other building plans for the Espinade addition repeatedly referred to the yard adjacent to the Falcon House as the rear yard or the rear yard of the house. It should be noted, the city's issuance of the building permit for the addition in 2022 created two new zoning setback variances, as you, as you have seen. With the yard, with the yard on Falcon Avenue erroneously shown as the front yard in the permit plans, the required front sec, the required front setback would be 30 feet on Falcon, as we have seen. However, the permit plans allowed the front setback on Falcon Avenue to be 15.09 feet. That's approximately 50% less than the required setback. That's a, that's a major type of discrepancy. Also, the permit allowed a rear yard setback of 13.86 feet, which is 45% less than the required rear setback of 25 feet. These variances were listed as existing condition approved by the architect on the site plan, and there is no written, there is no written evidence these variances were expressly approved per city code. The permit was issued with unapproved setback variances and an incorrect setback orientation being the front now shown on Falcon rather than on Espinade, as it had been for many years. In conclusion, the subdivision of land is a basic land development tool in the county. The waiver of plant setback requirements for the Espinade parcel in 1984 by the building official were appropriate based on the history of the parcel and the surrounding orientation of the homes. The Espinade House was built in 1947, and the front and rear yards were established at that time. The house front was on North Espinade Drive, and it was addressed on that street. For 47 years, this was the case until the building permit for the addition in 2022. There's no indication city staff were, were aware of the prior 1984 setback requirements that were established by Mr. Wells, and no written rationale given for changing the setbacks of the home in 2022. Also, there is no express approval of the new unapproved setback pattern with the front erroneously shown on Falcon with two newly created variances in the front and rear that were never appropriately addressed. The new addition is being, is being built in the required 25-foot rear yard setback for the Espinade Home established in 1947 and verified by the city building official in 1984 with the rear setback variance of 17.4 feet, which was never approved by the city council. In 1984, waiver of plat staff requirements reaffirming the rear yard of the Espinade House as the area adjacent to the Falcon lot and requiring removal of all encroachments into that rear yard setback area was, was a condition of approval and should be enforced today. In, in my opinion, the building permit for the addition was issued in error and should be stayed until the unapproved rear setback deficiency adjacent to the Falcon home can be addressed.
Thank you, Mr. Eiler. A few more questions for you. Are you, first of all, based on the summary I gave previously, do you agree with my summary of the facts in this case?
Yes.
Is there anything you'd like to clarify that I might have misstated?
No.
Now, when it comes to the conditions of approval, we're here going back to the city attorney memo from July 23, 1984. City Attorney opines, city code allows for, I think my batteries are dying now on this one too. City code allows for re-subdivision of property without the necessity of plating so long as certain specific conditions are met. And we have also in the actual city code section, "In lieu of recording of a plat, such conditions may be imposed as may be deemed necessary and appropriate to preserve the public interest." In your opinion, Mr. Eiler, are the letters that Mr. Wells issued in the 1983, 84 period specifying the different requirements, including the setback requirements, are those, in your opinion, conditions of the waiver of plat approval?
Yes.
Would the waiver of plat approval have to recite those conditions on its face, or could those conditions be included in those letters to be binding and enforceable?
No, it, no, it does not. And I think the letters from the building official could actually stand on their own as well, because the building official has a lot of authority in local governments on building issues and zoning issues.
And so if you were reviewing this file, analyzing whether the proposed addition could proceed, and you came upon these letters from Dave Wells, you would interpret those letters to be imposing binding conditions of approval as a part of that waiver of plat?
Yes.
Are you familiar with Section 150-020 of the current city code, which describes a procedure for plating and waiver of plat?
Yes, I did bring a copy, actually, so I would have something.
Sure. And is it clear, based on that code section, that a waiver of plat requires review by the city manager, the city building official, the city planning board, and ultimately by the city council for approval?
Yes, it states it very clearly.
And if this applicant, this property owner, decided to make this addition, and they wanted to build within these setback areas, is it fair to say they would require variances as well as a modification to the waiver of plat to remove the conditions that Dave Wells imposed?
Yes.
Now, turning to the issue of the rear accessory building, I'd like to bring up this plan. Actually, you can leave it, there might be a better one down the line here, without the red. Nope, nope. Going backwards. So we'll stay here with the one in red. All right. So, Mr. Eiler, we're looking at the survey dated August 31, 1983, annotated with a rectangular red box showing the one-story CBS structure. In your opinion, is that the accessory building that Dave Wells referred to in his letters?
Yes.
And seeing this plan here, do you see separation between that accessory building and the actual house?
Yes, it does appear that way.
All right. Now, are you familiar with the definition of accessory building in the city code, Section 150-002C1?
Yes.
I'll read that definition into the record. "Accessory building: A subordinate building in a rear yard detached from the main building and on the same premises as an existing main building, the use of which is clearly incidental and pertaining to that of the dominant use of the main building or land." So it's pretty clear, Mr. Eiler, that when Dave Wells referred to the accessory building, he was referring to, in fact, that structure that we just discussed outlined in red.
Yes.
And in fact, demolition permit application describes it as, "Rear yard structures to provide setbacks, demolition of accessory building."
Yes.
So it's fully consistent, then, that that building at the time was in the rear yard of the property?
Yes, it does.
And that's consistent with the definition of accessory building?
Yes.
Mr. Eiler, I'm going to hand you a document that is a recorded deed, and we'll go through it together. So we are looking at an indenture, a deed, from November 14, 1984, between Irving Zahn, Grantor, and Jose Santana and his wife Ada Santana for the 200 North Espinade property. Do you see that document in front of you?
Yeah.
It's, actually, it's for 300 Espinade, but that's fine. It's recorded in 12328, Book 12328, page 1,000 of the official records. Now, if you would please turn a few pages to the third page of this document, and you see a memorandum from Dave Wells dated August 13, 1984. Is that right?
Yes.
That one is recorded at Book 12358, page 1005. Now, I will read this, a very short memo. It says, "To whom it may concern, from Dave Wells regarding 200 North Espinade dated August 13, 1984. I'll summarize it briefly. Waiver of plat has been prepared, changing lots 1 and 2, Block 58, Cinema Park addition, to Country Club Estates from 1 and 2 to 1A and 2A respectively. An endorsement attesting to this change has been entered onto the face of two current surveys. Date and signature and seal will be affixed after completion of demolition permit attached. Use of the underground easement across the rear of Lot 2A is shown in dotted lines." Here's the important part. "Utility companies and documents supporting this change authorization are deposited in the Bussie Jackson Zahn file in the Building and Zoning Department, City Hall, 201 Westford Drive, Miami Springs, Florida." Do you see that?
Yes.
So if you see this document in the public records, and it alerts you to documents supporting this change authorization, would that prompt you, as a planner, to look at the file of this case and to see those documents that support the waiver of plat?
Yes, it would.
And would it be unreasonable to simply ignore matters of public record that refer to an existing city file?
I would not recommend that.
While I still have you, we'll be very quick here. There was this discussion, and I'm sure the city will focus on this as well, about an addition that was constructed in 2004 thereabouts. So we have building permit 20040686. Here's the building permit dated April 20, 2004. It's for the addition of carport or garage, aluminum roof and CBS slab, rear yard accessory building, canopies, concrete patios. You see that, Mr. Eiler?
Yes.
And you see this document that I'm showing you, Permit 04686, April 19, 2004. It says aluminum roof and screen. See the work description?
Yes.
So here we have a plan that's part of this file, and you can see here, it is an aluminum insulated roof. Is that right?
Correct.
And here's an aerial from 2007. You see here, it's shown the actual aluminum screened-in patio. Is that right, Mr. Eiler?
Yes.
Now, have you reviewed the public records provided by the city in this case?
Not, yes, as much as I was able to get, yes.
Regarding this permit?
Yes.
Have you seen any permit authorization to enclose this structure and add windows and make it part of the house?
No, I have not.
And here we have an aerial from 2006. You can see, it's a little bit grainy, but you can see it's an aluminum roof. You can see the panels, and you see here, it's a screened-in aluminum patio. And here we have a property appraiser sketch, which shows it's an addition without plumbing. But then again, we have a very clear description of the permit. It's in the rear yard. Is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you, Mr. Eiler. I'd like to, before we turn it off to the city, I'd like to have Michelle just discuss why she's here, how this affects her. I, I think you'll hear that it is important to her. This is not simply a matter of spite or curiosity. It's something that affects her.
If I may, I'm going to reserve my question to Mr. Eiler.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Until we're, we're done with our side of the presentation.
Sure, for sure. So I'd like to turn it over to Michelle to give a brief statement on how she is affected.
Good evening. As you know, my name's Michelle Ferreira, and I've called Miami Springs home for more than 13 years, when I purchased my home in 2012. And we're here today, unfortunately, because of another error by former city planner Chris Hyde. Another Chris Hyde special, so to speak. You see, Chris Hyde was a planner who gave zoning sign-off for my neighbor's home renovation and substantial addition that he should have known was in direct violation of an existing approval, a binding approval, an approval that has been part of the city's records and part of the public records since 1984. As you saw with Chris's presentation, my house didn't exist in 1984, but my neighbor's house did. That house was built in 1947, and the area that would become my lot was my neighbor's rear yard. It was built in compliance with our zoning codes. But in 1984, the then-owner sought approval to split the lots. As you saw, the owner's name was Irving Zahn. And that name might sound familiar to you. That's because he was a councilman in the late '70s for the city of Miami Springs. So former councilman seeks a waiver of plat, and the city's then-building official and planning director, Dave Wells, wrote multiple letters asserting the requirements that would need to be met in order for a waiver of plat to be approved. And the city's records contain numerous letters, numerous sketches, city attorney memos, documents related to utilities and easements, all of which make up the file for the waiver of plat approval. Zahn had to get utility companies to approve the location of an easement. He had to record a utility easement. He had to pay sewer assessments, and most importantly, he had to make modifications to the structures located on that property in order to achieve conforming setbacks as a condition to obtaining the waiver of plat approval. The owner requested approval to keep a utility room within the required rear yard setback, and Dave Wells responded in writing, notifying him that if he wanted to keep the utility room, it would be a matter for the Board of Adjustment. Now, we all know why Dave Wells gave that response. As a building official and planner, Wells had no authority to grant variances. Only the Board of Adjustment can grant variances, and certainly, a former councilman would know that too. And certainly, a former councilman would know that, too. Now, 40 years later, your planner, your attorney, have both asserted that all of these letters that the building official wrote in 1984 were simply advisory and are not binding, really? Then why on earth did Zahn proceed with satisfying all of those requirements if they were just suggestions? There's no basis to support that bogus theory. And in fact, Zahn, in 1984, satisfied all of those requirements that Dave Wells imposed as a condition of the approval of the waiver of plat, including demolishing the portions of the utility room that needed to be removed to provide a fully conforming rear setback. The city has also argued, without any supporting evidence, that Wells, at some point, changed his mind and allowed the lot split to occur in a way that violated the setback requirements and created nonconformities where none existed. That is not a credible argument. The city cannot point to a single document that proves Dave Wells changed his mind. We can debate whether the demolition permit that Dave Wells approved was for an accessory structure or not, but you cannot ignore what is blatantly clear. Whatever structures needed to be demolished as a condition of the waiver of plat approval were rear yard structures, not side yard, not front yard, rear yard. The city has also suggested, again, without evidence, that I sat around watching my neighbor violate the setbacks and did nothing. That is not the case. My neighbor's plans, they were approved without any notice to me, no communication by my neighbor, and zero communication from the city. Of course, I could see limited construction work taking place, but the house was already there. I had no idea that my neighbor was doing a substantial addition. At first, I saw demolition. The house was taken down to a shell, and the roof was removed. And it sat that way for a really long time. I talked to my neighbor about timing at one point, and he told me he was stuck because the roof troughs were in production. They were going to take months to produce. And in addition, for the better part of 2023, I was away from my home, unfortunately, for extended periods of time, and I was dealing with a significant health issue. It wasn't until the end of 2023, when I had to have a new fence installed, that I discovered my neighbor was building an addition so close to me. At that point, I had no idea whether or not my neighbor's addition was being done with permits or if our zoning code permitted him to build so close to me. And of course, in the midst of that happening, many of us, me included, were receiving astronomical water bills. And I was simultaneously dealing with having my sprinkler system, my plumbing system checked for leaks, dealing with the water and sewer department. So there was a lot going on. But I was not about to make such serious accusations against my neighbor without any proof. So I proceeded diligently to research and seek information about my neighbor's construction. I made several inquiries with the city about my neighbor's project. I asked for permit records. I asked if any variances had been granted. I also had a title search report done. And once I received this information, I researched our zoning code. I inquired with my law partners about my concerns and how to interpret the zoning codes. I checked with the county's plating department. It took time, months, to obtain these records. And every time I received additional information, I found something that prompted additional record requests. I ultimately approached my neighbor. I believe it was sometime in May of last year. I told him he was too close for comfort. He was defensive and reacted by telling me, "I have permits." I still had pending records requests. And I told him that whether he had a permit or not, his addition was too close to me. It was on top of me and that I had no privacy. I asked him if he would maybe plant some tall hedges to create some privacy. And he was dismissive, told me he wanted privacy, too, but he rejected my request and said tall hedges were expensive, and he didn't have the money for that. I tried to work things out with my neighbor. He declined. So I reached out to the city. I put together a comprehensive binder with the relevant provisions of our zoning code, the full title search report I had ordered, records the city had provided to me, drawings that I prepared to illustrate the errors and violations I believe existed with respect to my neighbor's construction. I met with J.C., the city manager, in August. It was a positive meeting. He advised me he wanted to set up another meeting with Ulysses a few days later. The meeting with Ulysses was never set up, and instead, J.C. referred me to Heidi and Sylvia. I subsequently had two Zoom calls with Heidi and Sylvia, and the result of those discussions landed me here. They told me to do what I had to do, which meant filing this appeal. That was the only option I was offered. This is uncharted territory for me. I've never been sued. I've never sued anyone. I've never had a dispute with any of my neighbors. In fact, my experience has been quite the opposite. I know most of my neighbors by first name. We look out for each other. We're respectful of each other. However, the immediate physical proximity of my neighbor's addition has translated into a real emotional and psychological intrusion. I mean, pictures don't do it justice. What used to be a private, peaceful part of my yard, where my family gathered, where I enjoyed pool days in the summer, and sitting around my mini fire pit in the winter, a space where I truly felt at home, now feels watched and overshadowed. Overshattered, excuse me. The addition towers over my home and directly overlooks areas that before were far enough away that my neighbor couldn't see into my backyard. Of course, not unless you got on a step stool or you're like seven feet tall. I've had to apply blurring film to my bedroom windows because workers at my neighbor's property are able to see inside my bedroom. I avoid my backyard now. I feel exposed, naked, and unsettled. If I want to take a swim in my pool, I'm in plain sight and on display. It's impossible to have any private conversation because it can be overheard by anyone nearby. If I want to sit peacefully and listen to the song and call of the birds, it's overshadowed by drills and banging sounds. My ability to enjoy the privacy of my own home has been compromised. I can tell that my neighbor has a covered terrace with sliding glass doors, and my guess is that on the other side of that, there's a living room. All of that faces my backyard. I believe my neighbor has holes cut out for light fixtures and what look like outdoor speakers all along the side that faces my yard and bedroom. When they move into their home, there will be the noise of guests gathered in their terrace right next to my bedroom. And if they have a barbecue, there is the increased risk of fire, especially if plants or shrubs are planted along the fence line. There's also an increased risk of flooding. My neighbor's structure, it's only a few feet away. And the area closest to my property line has the edge of the roof overhang and the elevated slab they poured for this covered terrace. Water sure to flow in my direction. This is more than just a matter of inconvenience. This situation strikes at the core of why we have zoning codes and specifically setback requirements. They serve not only to prevent overbuilding that infringes on a neighbor's reasonable enjoyment of their home, but they're also there to protect exactly the kind of space, privacy, and light that residents rely on. It's the city's responsibility to enforce our zoning codes fairly and equitably to ensure that one person's renovation doesn't become another's burden. The city also has an obligation to verify the information a resident provides with its permit application is accurate and complies with the zoning code. That didn't happen here. The zoning data my neighbor provided to the city confirms that their front yard and rear yard setbacks don't comply with our zoning code. They wrote "existing condition approved" next to each of them. That representation is false. The city confirmed no variances have been granted. There is no document any of us can point to where the city approved any nonconforming conditions. The waiver of plat approval is public record. There is a recorded deed. And that deed includes a memo from Dave Wells that refers to a demolition permit, and it refers to a Jackson-Bussi-Zahn file maintained by the city. The waiver of plat approval is not just a one-page, city-stamped survey of my neighbor's property. It's an entire file. My neighbor had noticed that additional documents needed to be reviewed. I asked the city for its records, and the city handed me hundreds of pages of documents related to the waiver of plat approval. My neighbor could have and should have done the same, but no inquiries were made by my neighbor or his architect or consultants. This was avoidable. Not only did Chris Hyde fail to review the city's own records in erroneously approving this permit application, but my neighbor and his consultants never requested the city's file referred to in the recorded waiver of plat memo from Dave Wells. Two wrongs don't make a right. Two wrongs don't make a right. If my neighbor wants to change the determination of the front yard that was made in 1984, the approval conditions of the waiver of plat need to be modified. If my neighbor wants to maintain structures that are nonconforming, he is required to seek a variance. The code does not authorize the city planner to modify waiver of plat conditions. The code does not authorize the city planner to approve variances. The building official likewise has zero authority to grant those types of approvals. Our code has a clear process for pursuing either of those options. And all I am asking for is the city to require and for my neighbor to follow the appropriate process. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Michelle. Before I turn it over to the city, I just want to clarify, since you weren't there at the Board of Adjustment hearing, that we do have in the record three letters from concerned neighbors. I'll just read their addresses for the record. Melissa Benetti, 315 Falcon Avenue. Antonio Rubio, 210 Esplanade Drive. And Carlos Velasquez and Zula Rivera of 290 North Esplanade Drive. They submitted these letters expressing their concerns about what's going on here. It's not just Michelle. There are other neighbors who also are very concerned. And I would also like to submit into the record, as part of this case, the presentation that I handed over to the city clerk. These two boards, the physical boards, you're free to keep them, which show the different setback interpretations and also the indenture, the deed, that I shared with Henry Eiler. I have given the city attorney a copy. It's also part of the prior record. So those are the documents that I would submit, in addition to what was submitted before. Thank you. I think so. Okay. Hello? Okay. Good evening. Again, Mr. Mayor, council members, Alex Uribe, on behalf of the city of Miami Springs staff. We're here again before you on the appeal of your decision to affirm the Board of Adjustment's recommendation. City staff urges you to deny the appeal and uphold your decision of April 28, which affirmed the board's recommendation. The appellant is asking you to find that the planner made an error in treating the side of 200 North Esplanade Drive facing her home, next door, as a side yard. What she wants is for this to be treated as a rear yard because it means the house on 200 North Esplanade will have to give a larger setback towards her home. Now, the required side yard setback is only seven and a half feet, while the rear yard would be 25 feet. And I'm sorry if I'm going to be a little repetitive. Chris did a very thorough job, and you know, we prepared, too. So I'm going to try to abridge this where I can, okay? So this case ultimately is very simple. It's going to boil down to, did the city planner make a lawful call as to where the front yard is on 200 North Esplanade when he reviewed permit RES 211143, which is the most recent construction that the appellant has appealed? Okay? Based on the city code, staff believes the answer is yes, and it's consistent with how the city has treated 200 North Esplanade over at least the last 21 years, not longer. And I would first like to go through how city staff interprets the code because we are bound by what the code says. We have to do what the code says. And after that, I want to present an alternative where even if we agree with the appellant's position on the authority of David Wells to be able to move where the front yard is, it still does not guarantee her the result that she is asking for. So, I guess, that's how we do it, okay? So we'll look at the definitions really quickly, and I know we looked at them already. So obviously, the definition of front yard is the yard extending across the front of the lot and being the minimum horizontal distance between the front lot line and the nearest part of the main building. So what we're talking about when we talk about front yard is the actual space between the street and the structure or between the lot boundary and the structure. And on corner lots, the front yard shall be considered as adjacent to the street upon which it has the least dimension. Now, that's shall. That says shall, and that's imperative. There's no flexibility there, okay? And the code then provides that the rear yard is located opposite and most distant to the front yard. So where the front yard is will dictate where the rear yard goes. And that is why the whole case of the front yard is so important here, okay? So as we move along, I put again both where staff's position is and what staff is relying on, which is the front yard specific, versus where the appellant is saying that the authority for Dave Wells came from on 150-002(c)(18e), you see that there's no reference to front yard there. It says the lot front can change, but not- It says the lot front can change, but not the front yard. And that's going to be very important, okay? So, a little bit of history. I'm going to gloss over this because Chris, again, he did a very good job presenting the history and appreciate that. But yeah, we had the two properties. Used to be two platted lots, 150 by 50. At that time, the front of the lot was Esplanade because the 100 feet of Esplanade was the narrower fronting dimension compared to 150 feet on Falcon. And you can see that there. This is the time that the house was built, okay? House was built in 1947. So we move over to the waiver of plat. 1984 comes around. You can see that in this plat, you can kind of see how the house is existing. And when you have the waiver of plat, by code, we follow what the code says. The front yard shall be along the street front with the narrowest dimension. When we make this a 75-foot lot to create the appellant's 75-foot lot, that changes to Falcon Avenue. The front yard changes to Falcon Avenue. So then, why are we here? And we're here because of... And by the way, this just shows you, this is from the waiver of plat. It shows you now that the new lot, the new corner lot, what was carved off, one part was carved out for the appellant's house. The other part remained this smaller corner lot. Now the dimensions have changed. Now Esplanade Drive at 100 feet is obviously larger than 75 feet that you have along Falcon Avenue. So again, and I'm going to be brief on this. We have the letter. And I just want to point out that this letter is to advise you of the city's requirements, should you want to do this. This was 1984, June 1984, before the waiver of plat was approved, okay? It talks about the front setback being on Esplanade and that no building permit can be issued for the remaining portion, for the remaining 75 by 100 portion of the platted lot until all encroachments have been removed, okay? This was about the ability to build on the appellant's lot. If we look here, this is the waiver of plat, and this has the actual signature of David Wells on there. And if you're able to read it, I know it's tough to read. It says, "Certified to be a true copy of waiver of plat executed at Miami Springs City Hall, 201 Westwood Drive, Miami Springs, Florida, and signed by the deputy clerk." Okay? And that's also attested to in the top corner as of September... Oh, no, that's the... Sorry, that's the survey date. This one has an attestation date of, I believe, August of... August 13, 84. It's right up there. You can see it. Okay, I don't have a laser pointer. How come you get all the cool stuff?
Is it the other way around?
Oh, is it this way? No, okay, well. It's right up there. It says it there. I'm sorry. Okay. Here, by the way, is the waiver of plat. You can see also, August 13, 1984, created the new lot, which is now Ms. Ferrera's property, okay? Now, we have the sketch. And honestly, I'm going to gloss over this also because Mr. Machado already went in-depth into this. But yes, this is one, the first of two sketches. This one shows a 25-foot rear setback. And you can see that it's handwritten in there. Is CBS one-story building attached? Question mark. We don't really know. And ultimately, we have the alternative sketch, which unlike, by the way, the previous sketch, this one would be with the front on Esplanade. That's not consistent with what the city code requires. The front yard shall be along Falcon Avenue. This second sketch is interesting because you see these two lines. And I've highlighted line A, and you can see that next to it is line B, okay? And if you go into what the record shows, right next to that, on the very next page of the electronic documents that we got, says A, "Building line, old house." That's line A. And B is "Building line of new house." So if we go back, you see the building line of the old house. That's where you would have to demolish to. That's where you would be allowed to go if you had the front on Falcon Avenue. That matches. It's the same distance you can see from the new property line that's being created from where the house that now Michelle owns... I'm sorry, that Ms. Ferrera owns. It matches that setback, okay? So... Give me one second. So ultimately, so we have these two possible scenarios here. One or two. Unfortunately, we're not... We weren't all there in 1984. I certainly wasn't there. And we don't know exactly how the city came down on this. Unfortunately, we have handwritten notes. We have speculation. But we don't know which way it actually went. There's arguments that go both ways. And I will recognize Mr. Machado makes some very compelling arguments, okay? But they didn't have a full grasp of what would happen when they were considering these different possibilities. Now, Mr. Machado said that they cut off part of this building because it could comply with accessory structure rear setback of five feet. And he's correct. But that same code provision allows the five-foot accessory building setback also for a side yard. So there's no real way to confirm if that's an accessory building, which, by the way, we all, I think, believe it is, at least at this point. That demolition might have been a side yard demolition, okay? And I'm going to go ahead. And I'm going to go ahead, and we're going to look again at this partial demolition of accessory building and rear yard structures. You're going to hear from the building official who will confirm that oftentimes, when we talk about the scope of work and the description of the work that's going to happen and the description of the improvements, the applicants often write that in. And they are not paying attention to the technical correctness of the plans or of the information that they provide. They hand it in, and the city reviewers sort it out. That happens all the time. It happens not just in this city, everywhere, okay? So now, let's look at what happened. The owner gets that permit to demolish the accessory structure. And I'm going to go back to what this looked like before. This was before the demolition. You see that the accessory structure measured 20 feet, just about 20 feet wide, 20.03. And it was about 1.15 feet to 1.35 feet off of the new property line, okay? This is a sketch also from the record that is from a later permit. And we'll talk about that in a little bit. But this shows the demolished or the partially demolished accessory structure with its much smaller footprint. Instead of 20 feet, now it was cut back to 14.7 or so, okay? And now you see that there's a wall that has about 5.3 feet of wall that comes towards. And then there's maybe about 1.65 feet of additional clear space between that wall and where the wall turns parallel to the property line and the property line itself, okay? By 1984, November of 1984, Mr. Wells confirms that all the zoning requirements are met and a building permit for the appellant's property may be issued, okay? Obviously, they didn't tear down the front of the property now facing Falcon. They didn't tear down the rear, okay? When you look at the way that the accessory building was knocked down, it is more consistent with this and where this line is than with this that has the question mark and doesn't fully grasp whether this building is attached or not. Unfortunately, we're not there. We can't prove it. But you know what? It doesn't really matter. Ultimately, you're going to see that this doesn't really matter. We move along. I'm going to show you that the applicant got... Or I'm sorry, not the applicant. The appellant's home was built, and this little structure continued. And there it is. It's been there for a long time. This is from 1988. Sorry, 1998, excuse me. So we move ahead now, and we're going to move to 2004. We're going to stop in 2003. You can see a little bit clearer. Again, that little part is still extending towards your house. And now we have a view of 2005. And we see now something new there, okay? That's an addition that was approved in 2004 under permit 0400000686. This is a detail and part of the plans that are on file for that permit. Here's a more detailed look. You see that this is a three-inch aluminum insulated roof, which is attached to the existing residence. And if you see right at the very edge, it projects out, as you saw in the aerial, towards the appellant's property, 11 and a half feet. And if you look at the roof overhang, it actually shows about another 12 inches. So call it 12 and a half feet out towards the appellant's property, okay? Here's a sketch of the area, and it kind of shows you where this addition is, okay? Now, this is not an accessory building because we know by city code an accessory building must be detached. And as we talked about, an accessory building can be five feet from the side or from the rear. No, this has to respect setbacks. This addition has to respect setbacks. So if we look at this, and there's 12 feet coming from the wall of the house, which we saw from the prior documents, is already at that 25-foot line from the appellant's property, how could you approve this addition to encroach 12 feet if this was a rear? The answer is you can't. You would have had to get a variance. But no variance was ever sought or required by the city. The city reviewed this, and the only possible way that that gets approved is they say, you know what? The front is Falcon Avenue. And that's consistent with what the code tells you. The front yard shall be there. And if the front yard shall be there, the rear yard shall be to the opposite side. And that means these are side yards. And the side yard only needs to be 10% of the entire lot width. That means on a 75-foot lot, that's seven and a half feet. So this complies, is perfectly compliant with side yard setbacks, okay? Perfectly compliant. I looked at it in Google Earth to kind of give it a rough estimate because unfortunately, the plans don't themselves have a setback diagram against the appellant's property. But it's about 13 feet, which is consistent with, you know, 11 and a half to 12 and a half feet, okay? Here's a side kind of offset view. And Mr. Machado did one similar. And that's how it was originally approved. And that is definitely and unmistakably closer than 25 feet that the appellant is asking for back in 2004. This is a photo from 2021 just to show that that condition has endured since 2004, okay? 21 years, going on 22 years, okay? So now, we're going to... And you know what? I think we... I might benefit from the lights, please. That's why I couldn't see the laser. So unfortunately, these plans didn't scan all that well here. But I'm going to get you detailed here so you can see it. So now we're moving forward to the permit that is at issue, right? RES 211143. You can see here, if I blow up the detail here, the addition is going over that area where this 2004 structure had been, or the 2004 addition, excuse me, had been. Remove existing structure and proposed addition, okay? We see that the minimum side yard setback, which is what was being constructed, they provided 7.67 feet. That is compliant with the minimum seven and a half feet that they are allowed if this is treated as a side setback, okay? Now... In his... Hang on one second, sorry. So in his review, again, Chris Hyde applied the setback properly. The front yard is along the narrowest street, which is Falcon Avenue. That means it's a side. That is why you can approve seven and a half feet on the setback going towards the appellant's house. Now, the city didn't make a mistake here, okay? Although undoubtedly, and I will give it to them, this architect was sloppy. If you look further in here, it absolutely mislabels. It says the front's here, the side's here. But that is not what governs. What a sloppy architect puts on plans is not what counts. What counts is, does this comply with the code? And what does the code say? The code says the front yard shall be over here, okay? That is what counts. That is how they were able to approve the addition in 2004. So obviously, it didn't meet a rear setback. That's how they approved this, okay? Now, I'm going to address the appellant's fundamental challenge when it comes to these two provisions and which one controls, okay? While staff doesn't feel that the applicant's reliance on 150002C18E is correct as it relates to the front yard, I'm going to show you also why that doesn't matter. Because even if we go ahead and we play devil's advocate and we allow and say, yes, David Wells had that authority to change where the front yard is, I'm going to show you why it can be... It won't lead to the result that she's asking for, okay? But first, I'm going to show you... But first, I'm going to show you an example of where there's a difference between the front yard as in 150002C85 and front as 150002C18E. And look at a property at 2201 Ludlum Road. Okay? Here, this is a corner lot at Ludlum Road or Ludlum Drive and Robin Avenue. Okay? And I'm going to show you that the front, and you see the covered porch, you see the walkway, the driveway, all of that, and the front door, I'm going to show you, it faces, it's actually facing Robin Avenue. However, even though the house is facing Robin Avenue, the setbacks comply with the requirement that the front yard be located along the narrowest dimension fronting street. So if you look, the 30 feet, the 30, whoops, sorry. The 30-foot setback for the front is actually here along the 61 feet fronting Ludlum. That's where your 30-foot front setback is. Toward the side street, you're required 15, or you're required 20, and there they are. It's 20. It's not 30 over here. If this were the front, it would require a 30-foot setback. Over here, this is the side opposite to the front, opposite Ludlum Road. This one is 25 feet. It's hard to kind of see, but it's there. And then to the side of budding the neighbor, we need 15, what it was, sorry, we need 10% of the total lot width. If we have down there, I think that's about 80 or 90, or 80 feet, you get 20 feet here. That's more than compliant. Okay? So what this shows you is that even if you can orient the lot to the front and you can put the house at the front, the front on the longer street front, you don't put the yard there. And the yard is what controls the setbacks. That's where it all flows. That's what the code requires. Okay? And by the way, just to kind of put it there, look that that says front elevation, and we're talking about the front of that house, which is facing Robin, which is not the location of the front yard. So again, whatever we call it, whatever's put on the plans, that does not control. What controls is whether or not it is compliant. Okay? Here, you can just see kind of an overview so you can see it. And you see that the big front lot, the front yard is over here towards Ludlum. It's not where the front of the, where we would think the front of the house is. And this is the condition that you see at 200 North Esplanade. The front door is on Esplanade. And that's because that's where it was when it was originally built. But things change. Okay? Things change. So I want to also talk about what happens if the applicant is correct. Okay? And what if Dave Wells had the authority, let's play devil's advocate, that Dave's Wells had the authority to make the front yard, not just the front, the front yard along Esplanade. Okay? Here's what would happen to this house. You have the 15-foot side yard setback. That's it. Okay? 10-foot side yard to the south or downward anyway, 25-foot rear. Other than making an expensive and difficult logistically decision to put a staircase inside a house that is only 14 feet deep. The areas in blue are the only areas that you can expand this house. It's severely restrictive. We don't know if the foundation could take the second story. We don't know that, but we can for sure know that that would be expensive and impractical. But otherwise, this configuration handcuffs this house to this configuration. And that is unfortunately not practical for today's modern age. You're going to discourage investment in that property. You're going to discourage that property from being useful. What you're going to encourage is someone to knock it down and then build, and build something bigger. And then, as Mr. Machado said, then really that they can go and they can build with the frontage on Falcon. They can put their driveway there. They can put their front door there. Okay? And Ms. Ferrera will still get the seven and a half feet of setback that she is complaining with this permit. Now, let's talk about the authority that Dave Wells may have had, if you believe the applicants. If we look at that code, okay? Let's assume that the front, the lot front means front yard shall be the narrowest portion of budding the street unless determined otherwise by the planning and zoning director. Is there anything in this code that says, hey, once we make this determination, this is going to last forever? No. Is there anything that says, hey, when you come in here, if you're going to come in here with a new set of plans, I have to look at it the same way forever and ever and always? Absolutely not. That's absolutely not. So the other thing, another thing I want to point out are some other properties in Miami Springs where they did exactly what happened at this location. They did a waiver of plat to split one property into two single-family home sites. Okay? And I want to show you how they have all been treated. Here is 90910 Quail Avenue. You can see the front yard is in blue, the side yard is in red, and the rear yard is in green. The narrowest fronting street over here is Quail Avenue. So where is that 30-foot front? It's on Quail Avenue. Here is 90910 Pinecrest Drive. Another waiver of plat. Again, the narrower fronting street, that's where we find the front yard. Side, the property next to this one gets the side yard. Now we have 501 and 517 Palmetto Drive. Again, the corner lot. The narrower fronting street here is Palmetto Drive, not La Barron. So the front yard is located on Palmetto Drive. And the house next door, part of the waiver of plat, gets the side. 901 and 903 Dove Avenue. Same thing. Front yard along Dove Avenue, which is the narrower fronting street. So why are we? There's one more. But I'm not going to repeat it because you get the picture. Okay? Now, I want to say before this that I I don't say this as a person with no empathy, Michelle. Okay? I know. It's not personal. But there is a serious timing problem with this appeal. And it's not just limited to whether or not she and her exact set of facts and what happened and what she struggled with play any role. Okay? There's a real issue of whether she can bring up this case at this time. The permit that she's complaining about was approved in 2022. The appellant had actual notice. She lives right next door, and she can see that this house has been under construction since then. This is an aerial photograph from January 2023. So this is a year, well, not a year, but almost a year after the permit was approved. Shows the roof truss is installed. And if you can't tell where that setback is going to be, I don't know what to tell you. But that is completely clear as to where this house is going and the limits to where this is going. Yet this appeal wasn't filed until November of 2024, nearly two years after this photo was taken. And here's what it looks like in March 2024. This is again before she filed her appeal. More time has passed and more work has completed. Appellant did nothing for months after this photo. For more than two years, she's been able to see this go up from next door. And she's been able to see all of the expense and all of the effort that the owner has put into renovating this house. Is it fair to allow her to make this complaint now? Now that the owner's almost done with it? After the owner got the permit, relied on it? What kind of precedent does this set for the city? Let's say we throw this permit out after having it been issued for more than three years. Who else's permit in the city is going to be safe if we allow that? How many other neighbors are going to say, you know what? It's been years, but I got a problem with what my neighbor's doing. What kind of worms would that open up? How many years back are we going to allow someone to come in and challenge a permit that they don't like? This appeal is just not timely. The only reason she's allowed to come here is because our code is deficient in not having a limit that says, hey, you know what? When we give a permit, you have X number of days to appeal it. This code doesn't have that, and that's why we're here. That's why we're here three years after this permit was issued. Unfortunately, that's something that I think the city, we can deal with with a code change. I think that's good policy. But unfortunately, that's neither here nor now. You should use your common sense with this. The city code is not intended to allow you to come and challenge something like this so late. I also want to note, like in the vein of this, that the 2004 addition was there within that rear yard setback area. If you believe that the building official changed the front to Esplanade, that was already there. That rear yard setback of 25 feet, that hasn't been there since 2004, since long before the appellant bought her property. Nobody ever challenged that. So, you know, at the end of the day, you know, whether you believe the code fixes the location of the front yard on Falcon Avenue because the front yard shall be located there, or you believe that Mr. Wells had the authority to change it, you can't question that the 2004 permit was there, and this is how the city's been treating this property as a side yard there for the last 21 years. There's no question there. There's no other way legally to build that there. And what this appellant is asking you to do is to throw all of that away at the expense of her neighbor so that she can be gifted a 25-foot clear area against her house. That's ridiculous. No other similarly situated property elsewhere in the city gets that kind of treatment. Every other waiver of plat situation where you have a corner and an interior, all of them give the side yard to the neighboring house. All of them have their front going toward the narrower street. Most homes in this city give the seven and a half foot setback, one to the other. That's what her property gives to this neighbor. That is what she gives. She is complaining about getting what her property gives. Now, I don't know of any code or legal theory anywhere that allows a neighbor to dictate what kind of setback goes on a neighboring property that they don't own. Imagine, I would want all of my neighbors to give, everybody give me your rear setbacks, please. It doesn't make any sense. And again, we see the new roof here. This is an addition. They incorporated and they left the existing home standing and they added to it. But even Mr. Machado said it. If we were to knock down this home today and start it new, yeah, you wouldn't have the nonconforming front. That's for sure. You would not have this nonconforming front. You wouldn't have this nonconforming rear. But you know what? You would have the sides. And that that would be the same condition she's getting. She's not getting any worse than what she would get if somebody built a new house there. It's not going to be any closer to her home. Okay? Um, I want to just mention one quick thing. Actually, a couple of quick things. Mr. Machado mentioned that the council would be required to amend the waiver of plat today. And yeah, the code does require waivers of plat to be approved by this council from here on out. But again, as we saw, the conditions were not put into the waiver of plat saying, hey, this is going to be your front. So you don't need to go back to the council to change it. And if you believe what Mr. Machado says is that the planning director can change the location of the front, well, that's in the code. Why do I need to come to the council for something then that the code says is allowed? That doesn't make any sense. Okay? And I also want to mention that because Mr. Machado said that, hey, you know, this letter was put on the record and the fact of the front being on Esplanade was put on the record and that buyers should beware and should look into this before they buy and rely on this. Well, I think that cuts both ways because if you look in the record, much later than the 1984 letters from David Wells and much later than than the deed that was put forth with that memo on it, which didn't actually say anything about the setbacks, just said, go look in the file. Much later than that, if you look through the record, you're going to find the 2004 addition. You're going to find that the city treated this as a side setback. The city accepted it. The city granted permits. And whatever we want to talk about, creating a nonconformity in the front and in the rear. Nonconformities get created all the time when people rezone their property. And all of a sudden, now different zoning rules apply. Nonconformities get created all the time when the city makes changes to their code. When plats get done, it happens all the time. That's why this code has, and all zoning codes have, regulations that deal with nonconformities. And the rule is, and the city's own code says that as long as the structure was legally, was legal when it was built, your nonconformity can continue, cannot be expanded, but it can continue. This house existed lawfully. It was rendered nonconforming when they split the lots. And it's been recognized, and if it, and it's been recognized And it's been recognized and ratified by the city because the city granted the 2004 permits. If, if we want to talk about having to knock down those areas, why didn't the city make them knock it down in 2004 when they said, yeah, build over here and we'll treat it as a side? But knock, then knock down the, the, the front part and the rear part. They didn't do that. They didn't do that because nonconformities are allowed to continue. Now, this permit that we're complaining about has no impact. On that front nonconformity. So. You know. It's disingenuous to say. That someone's on notice of a letter from 1984. When the more recent permit history. Grandfathered in. These nonconformities. You can't say, go back further over here and maybe, does this one trump the later one? I don't know. I don't know. You know what? We're going to rely on what the city's done for the last 20 years. Okay? See. I will also address some of the, some of the points that Chris made as far as the 2004 permit. When I call the city's witnesses and I'm going to. Go ahead and, and call them now. So thank you very much for listening. I guess I would. You want to start? Henry, you mind if I start with you?
Does anyone need a break before we go on?
You'd like to take a break?
Yeah, I, I just, we've, we've been at this for two hours. I just. It, it feels like a natural point.
I'm sorry, we've been at that so long.
Mayor, council, is that okay? We'll take a five minute break. Thank you.
Yes.
I was.
And just to manage expectations. I believe, who, who else are you calling?
Oh, Ms. Vargas briefly and Mr. Fernandez briefly.
Okay.
That's, I'm going to try and just rocket through it.
Okay. And then Mr. Machado. I'm assuming you have some rebuttal?
Yes, we will put on some rebuttal, but we'll be brief.
Okay.
Mercifully.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Do you need the lights on?
Whatever anyone's, whatever everyone's. Oh, yeah. That is a good idea. I'm sorry.
It'll help me.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Eiler. Good evening again. In the, the document I just handed you is the 2004 permit. If you flip towards the back, you're going to see some sketches and some plans. And you, and most importantly, you're going to see the sketch of survey that's like page four, I think, or five, sorry, five. Now. You see that the setback to Falcon Avenue is called out at 15 feet. Do you see that?
Yes, I do.
Okay. And you see. That the footprint. Of the 2004 addition is shown extending from where it says one story CBS residence. You see that and it's extending 12 feet. Towards Ms. Ferris' home. Do you see that?
Yes.
Okay, and I'm going to, I'm just going to put this just because it's kind of similar. So you can see it. It's this, okay? Now. You see on the bottom here. Says City of Miami Springs approved for permit. See the stamp?
Yes.
Okay. In your mind, would that tell you that this document was approved by the City of Miami Springs?
Yes, it does appear that way.
And you see some squiggly lines that hopefully are signatures. Right by zoning, right by mechanical.
Yep, some squiggly lines.
Yes. Yes.
Mr. Odiva, just to clarify, what's on the screen?
Is not quite that.
But it's an excerpt from what you're showing, Mr. Eiler?
It's a modified excerpt of what I'm showing for Mr. Eiler.
Okay.
Okay. So. Mr. Eiler. When they approved. This 12 foot encroachment. this 12-foot encroachment, they could not have approved that if that were in the rear yard area. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And also, they don't show a requirement of demolishing an additional 15 feet towards Falcon Avenue on that non-conforming front. Do you see any requirement there for demolition?
No.
Can you check anywhere else in this permit? If you've, I guess if you've seen the permit, there are any?
I have not seen this permit.
Okay. Well, would you take my word for it that there's no demolition proposed within that permit? I'll give you a minute to look.
Thanks. No, I don't see any reference to demolition.
Okay. Thank you. The last thing I'm just gonna ask you is if we looked at this property, just the property generally, you knocked this house down, where would it make? Would you see any reason why you wouldn't have the frontage on Falcon Avenue if this property were making improvements from scratch today?
But we have the history of this going back to 1984 and 1957.
Right, right. And, okay, let me preface this with this. If the code says that the director of planning and zoning is allowed to change the front, okay? If he's allowed to change the front, or alternatively, if the front yard shall be located along the narrowest fronting street, do you see any reason why they would not develop this property with the front on Falcon Avenue?
If it was a vacant lot?
If it was a vacant lot?
If it was a vacant lot, I would think they would follow the code and there was no previous history of waiver of plat conditions or anything of that nature. It was just vacant with no prior history like we have here. Yeah.
Right. And so if the director who has the authority to make the determination of where that front is, which he did, in his letter, they had the authority to change it if the new zoning director had the authority to change it, he could, could he change it to Falcon? If it was a brand-new, if it was a brand-new construction?
I would think they would have to change the waiver of plat myself. If the waiver of plat...
That's fair.
It really totally changes this as a vacant lot versus a built lot.
Okay.
In my mind. So I think they would have to go back and change those plat conditions. But if this was vacant, then there would have been no reason for the building official in 1984 to even address the setbacks because it'd be a vacant property.
Okay. Just give me one quick second. Handing you the waiver of plat. Does it say anywhere on that waiver of plat any mention or any reference to any conditions that have been put on there? Does it show any Xs like we talked about for demolition? Does it show anything about which side is gonna be the front yard or the front of that lot on that waiver of plat?
No, it does not.
Thank you very much. I've got nothing further.
I'll give them right back to you in a little bit. A little bit of redirect here briefly with Mr. Eiler. Mr. Eiler, could we turn to the documents that Mr. Odiva handed you? The 2004 permit. Specifically, page five. We'll start with page five, Sketches Survey. You see the stamp, City of Miami Springs, Florida, approved for permit only. Then it has a series of lines, Building Inspector, Plumbing Inspector, Electrical Inspector, Mechanical Inspector, Zoning and Structural. You see that?
I see that.
Are you familiar with these sorts of stamps on plans? Have you seen this before?
Yes.
Do those stamps ultimately get signed by each corresponding discipline or department of the city confirming their approval?
Yes, if it does involve that particular specialty.
And in this particular sheet, next to the zoning line, is there any signature from a zoning official approving this document?
It doesn't appear to have a signature.
Now, the squiggly lines that you described earlier, if you look at the top of the page, Office Copy of City of Miami Springs, you see they run from the top of the page all the way down.
Yeah.
That's not a signature, is it?
No.
Signature line is blank.
No.
From the zoning official.
Right.
Can you turn to page six? So here we have Rams Engineering Structural Design of the Diaz Residence. You see there's also a similar stamp near the middle of the page, City of Miami Springs, approved for permit only.
Yes.
And you see it has a series of lines with the corresponding disciplines, Building Inspector, et cetera, all the way down.
Yes.
You see that there's a signature from a building inspector?
Yes.
And there's a signature from the structural department?
Right.
Is there a signature next to the zoning line?
No.
Do you have any certainty that this addition was ever approved by a zoning official of the City of Miami Springs?
I do not.
Can you go to the first page of this set of documents? Near the middle of the page, on the right-hand side, there's a description of the construction type. It says aluminum. And then it says other structural info. It says rear slash yard accessory building. Is that not?
Correct.
And so there's no uncertainty that this was in the rear yard based on this document?
Based on this building permit.
The only uncertainty is that there's no evidence that it was ever approved by a zoning official as to the setbacks.
It...
Not on the face of this document?
None that I can see.
If we could please go back to the line of testimony about knocking the house down. If we knocked the house down, then we could do what we wanted to do. Well, isn't that the heart of this case? They had an option to knock this house down, but they chose not to. Is that right? If they wanted to build in that white buildable area shown on that plan, they could have knocked the house down.
Yes.
But in choosing not to knock the house down, are they not constrained to build within the setbacks that would apply with the front remaining on Falcon, on North Esplanade?
Yes.
And based on the waiver of plat approval, we've gone down this line of questioning, there is no written determination in the records since 1984 that the frontage of the corner lot was ever changed?
I have never seen any kind of documentation.
The fact that the single-sheet waiver of plat approval Mr. Odiva handed you does not reference a condition of approval, does that mean that you can dispense with the entire file in this case, including the letters that Dave Wells prepared and the memo that he recorded in the public records referencing the file?
No. I think the, I think the letter from David Wells has ultimate authority.
And it is, those conditions are binding and are enforceable on this property?
In my, in my experience, yes.
Okay.
Nothing further. Just one last thing. Are you, are you aware, Mr. Eiler, and I can't imagine you are, whether in 2004, the City of Miami Springs had a zoning or a planning reviewer? Or whether or not those responsibilities might have been handled by the building official, much like in 1984 when David Wells signed all of these documents?
I'm not aware.
That's all. Thank you.
Reretract. Mr. Eiler, in your experience, does the building department handle structural reviews?
Yes.
And in that sheet, page six, you see two signatures. One on behalf of the building inspector and one on behalf of the structural
Yes.
inspector. And there are two signatures.
Two.
But there's nothing for zoning.
Correct.
And if the building official were in charge of zoning matters, wouldn't you expect to see a signature confirming zoning approval on that line?
Yes, I would.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor, before we move on on this, I just want to make clear for the record, Mr. Machado, the document you were just referencing, was that in the Board of Adjustment hearing? Do you, I'm just, I just want to identify the exhibit.
Based on this line of testimony, I would like to have it entered into the record to reflect the absence of the zoning approval for the 2004 addition.
So it's not in the record?
If it's not, I would like to have it entered.
Okay. I'm just trying to identify where it is in the record. And Mr. Odiva, the document that you showed us, the waiver of plat, was exhibit... That one I was able to get easily. It's Exhibit B in the underlying case. I think this was in there as well.
Do you want to go up there?
This was in there.
I don't care where you, wherever you feel comfortable. If you're comfortable?
So I just want to make sure. Were, the clerk is gonna accept both of these documents?
I'm sure it was in before because we based our, a lot of our case on this permit back in the underlying case.
I thought so. They're both relying on what's already submitted.
Yeah.
That's why, for the record, I just want to have what exhibits from below are being referenced. Just that people can follow along. I'll see if I can figure this out and we can continue.
Whatever you're more comfortable with. If you want to go, go.
Oh, that comfy chair.
You may stay there for the rest of the meeting.
No, you listen, has to go.
Good evening. Please state your name.
Good evening. My name is Sylvia Rodriguez.
And what is your profession?
I am a professional planner.
And are you the planner for the City of Miami Springs?
I serve in that capacity right now, yes.
Okay. When did you begin serving the City of Miami Springs?
Our assignment started in approximately May of 2023, so it's been a little bit over two years.
You prefer, do you perform this role for other cities?
Yes.
All right. Have you reviewed City of Miami Springs Code Section 150-002(c)(85), which talks about front yards?
Yes.
Does that section govern the location of the front yard when the property is a corner property like 200 North Esplanade?
Yes.
Where does that section of code require the front yard to be located on those corner properties?
The front yard has to be according to that section of the code. On the lot, the side that has the least dimension facing the street.
So the street front with the shorter length?
The street front with the shorter length, yes. By the way, I'm sorry. I have to apologize for like playing it conido here tonight. And my eyesight's still a little blurry and the light bothers me, so I apologize. I'm not trying to look interesting.
Okay. So does this code provide, does this code provision provide any flexibility in determining which street front yard must be, which street the front yard must be located on a corner lot?
No.
Okay. How does the city code determine where the rear yard is?
That would be the next definition in this section of the code, which defines that a rear yard is the most distant opposite side to the front yard.
Thank you. And what about side yards? Where does the code, what does the code say about side yards?
Yeah, that would be the next definition, which is number 87, which says that they are the the minimum horizontal distance between a side lot line and the side of the nearest part of the main building. And that they are, you know, extending from and between the required front yard to the required rear yard.
Have you seen the waiver of plat, which has an accepted date of August 13, 1984?
I have seen it. Thank you.
Does that document, on its face or anywhere, include any of the restrictions from Mr. Wells' letters regarding the setbacks?
It does not, that I can see.
Okay. Are you familiar with the building permit from 2004 for the aluminum addition to the house?
I familiarize myself with it somewhat for this process.
Okay. Now, was this a permit issued for an addition to the house at 200 North Esplanade?
I believe it is.
Was this addition located in the same general vicinity as the new addition in the new permit, RES 211143?
Yes.
Can you confirm, based on the sketch that the, and the plans, that this addition projects some 11 and a half to 12 and a half feet from the house towards the appellant's property?
Yes.
Now, based on the location of the 2004 addition, the setback it provides to the appellant's property, did the city treat that area as a side yard in 2004?
It appears to have, yes.
If the city had recognized this area instead as a rear yard in 2004, could it have allowed this addition as shown in these plans?
No.
Why not?
Because it would not have met the rear setback. And if you were to even assume that this was a non-conforming rear setback because of the presence of the storage structure, the partial structure that remained there?
Accessory, yeah, the accessory structure.
Yeah. It still would not have allowed that to be extended in that direction.
You reviewed the file for this property?
As much as I was able to, yes.
To your knowledge, based on that review, was a variance ever granted here to allow this addition to go into a rear yard?
I did not see any references to a variance.
Now, in your experience, would this permit and plans have come before whoever's responsible for signing off on zoning to approve, before these plans would get approved?
I, I would think so, yes.
Would the city planner or whoever's responsible have checked the addition for compliance with the zoning code and required setbacks?
That would be the standard procedure, yes.
You see the, you saw the City of Miami Springs approved permit stamp?
Which, which page is that?
On the fifth page.
Oh.
On the sketch.
Yes. Right, yes.
Okay. Okay. I'm gonna move on to the new permit. Have you reviewed the permit RES 211143?
For the purposes of this process, yes.
Okay. You didn't review this for approval, correct?
No.
Who reviewed this for approval?
I believe that would have been my predecessor.
Based on your review, what did those plans approve?
Those plans approved, well, an improvement to the existing structure, a new roof, and an expansion or an addition in the direction of the the direction of the rear yard. That is, direction of the, the, the rear yard, that is, the, trying to rein myself, so that's north, so that would be to the south.
Okay.
Yeah.
And let me ask you, did, did this area, this is the area where the 2004 addition was?
Generally, yes.
So it's, it's in that yard between the existing house and the appellant's property?
Yes.
Okay.
I get them all.
And if you notice, and can you tell me what the setback that was approved on that permit was?
I believe it was slightly over seven and a half, like 7.67 or something like that, if I recall correctly.
7.67 feet?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah. So let me ask you, if, if we're looking at what kind of setback that is, when you have a front setback of 20, of 30, a rear of 25 and a side of seven and a half, which one of those setbacks is it?
A requirement of that, right? Yes. So if you were looking at it from that perspective, that makes sense to be a side setback, 10%, 10% of the width of the lot, which is 75.
So if, if this were in fact a rear yard area, this wouldn't fit, would it?
No.
You would need a variance.
You would.
There's no variance in the record?
No.
Okay. Now, let me ask you a little bit about legal nonconformities. If you have a legal nonconformity, meaning that the structure was legal at the time it was built, are you allowed to keep it? Do you have to demolish all the nonconformities or bring them into compliance if you're proposing changes that don't affect the nonconforming aspects of the property?
Uh, generally, no, you, you would not.
Have you viewed any other properties that were split by a waiver of plat where it resulted in a corner and interior lot, like 200 North Esplanade and 300 Falcon?
We have seen some, yes, and, uh, reviewed several in the process of, um, preparing for the hearing, for, for these hearings.
Are the front yards in those situations on the corner lot, are they given to the narrower fronting street?
Yes.
So in those cases, the neighbor, the interior neighbor who's in the same position as the appellant, she, they get a side setback.
They get a side setback.
And that's how the city treated this situation at 200 North Esplanade when it approved the new permit?
I believe so.
Okay. Now, if you were to knock down this house, I'm going to ask you the same question I asked Mr. Eiler, if you were to knock down this house and you were asked to apply the code today, where would you put the front on this property?
This is a, a conforming lot. Both, both of the lots as they were split were the same dimensions and the same setbacks that applied to the appellant's lot would apply to this one. If the, if the, if the lot was vacant, um, Falcon would be the front, Esplanade would be the corner side, and the side closest to the appellant's property would be the interior side, therefore, the rear would be the opposite of Falcon.
Thank you, I have nothing further.
Thank you.
Thank you, just a few questions, I think it will be helpful if we turn on Mr. Uribe's presentation to the slide where he shows the two separate definitions, one is outlined in yellow, one in.
I don't have the clicker heel or so.
It's right underneath you, it's right underneath the folder.
Under the folder.
Oh. Thank you, I'm sorry about that. Which one you need? Oh, you got it. Oh, there you go. Okay, we'll leave it there.
All right. So Ms. Vargas, there was a line of questioning about the right-hand side of this screen, Section 150-002(c)85 yard, comma, front.
Right.
Now, it says a yard extending across the front of a lot, that's the front yard. How would you, reading this definition, determine what the front of a lot is? Would you turn to the definition on the left, which says the front of a lot shall be?
That's true, to be the portion nearest to the street.
So in reading Section 150-002(c)85, you would have to refer to Section 150-002(c18e).
Yes.
And for the record, that last definition, c18e, does say for corner lots, the lot front shall be the narrowest portion of butting the street unless determined otherwise by the planning and zoning director.
Right.
So there was a line of questioning about flexibility in determining which street is the front, and we know that Mr. Wells gave the applicant an option. Based on the documents in the record, he has letters saying you cannot create a nonconformity, correct?
Um, if I recall correctly, yes.
But in fact, the diagram we're showing here shows that the rear yard, if you treat Falcon as the front, is not conforming, and the front yard, if you treat Falcon as the front, is not conforming, correct?
Yes.
Can we turn, please, to the 2004 building permit for the so-called rear yard accessory building addition? You saw that I went over with Mr. Eiler the fact that there are signatures missing on the zoning line on several sheets, correct? You heard that line of questioning?
I did hear it, yes.
Can you turn with me to a different page, page four of this set, permit routing form?
Right.
You see it says, has a series of columns, review, review required, approve, disapprove, you see that?
Yes.
And the columns are zoning, electrical, plumbing, mechanical, structural and building, do you see that?
Yes.
Now, there are signatures under the approve column for structural and building, do you see that?
I do.
Is there a signature under the line corresponding to zoning approval?
Uh, there is not.
Okay. Can we please turn, and I have the clicker, so it falls on me to do it, there was this line of questioning about other properties you might have seen that are corner lots with waivers of plat, and I think there was a, here we are.
No, that's.
No, but yeah, this is, this is a similar one. So here we have 2201 Ludlam Road, you see that?
Mm-hmm.
This is a corner lot, Mr. Uribe went over with you all the different ways in which the house faces one way, but the front is a different way, you see that?
Yes.
Is there any nonconforming setback on this plan?
Not on this one, no.
Now, these setbacks conform.
Right, um, I don't know when this house was built, and so it is possible that the building permit is issued after the determination was made in this matter.
But in, from these figures, the setbacks are all compliant, there's a consistent plan for setbacks and the setbacks comply. Going on to other similarly situated properties, Quail Avenue, we have 90910, again, here, there's a consistent plan for setbacks and the setbacks comply, you don't see any nonconformity shown on this diagram.
Not on this one, no.
And you don't see any nonconformities shown on the Pine Crest Drive diagram?
No, again, I, I don't know when any of these were built, I don't remember.
But there are no nonconformities shown on these diagrams.
They're not, no.
And the same is true for Palmetto Drive, there are no nonconformities shown on these diagrams.
Correct.
Dove Avenue, same thing?
Right.
Bluebird Avenue, same thing?
Yes.
Okay. I'll go back in summation and describe why that it's important, but just please pay attention, the plans show conforming setbacks, our plan does not. So Mr. Uribe also spoke with you about, well, if the building were demolished, you could build with the front being Falcon and Ms. Ferreira would have a side setback no matter what along her property line.
Just like she does.
Just like she does, but there's a difference, because she will get more than a side setback, right? She would, can we go to the addition, it might be toward the front? Do we have an aerial showing the addition? It might be in my presentation.
If there's an aerial, if you, you go back all the way showing, you want the 2004 addition or you want the?
Yes, the 2024, the 2024.
Oh, oh, uh, keep going, keep going, and it's, it's in the timeliness.
Okay.
Let me know when you get there, because I'm getting dizzy.
Here we are, here we are, let's see if we have the, yes, we do. Okay, so her side setback here would be the same if they built it with Falcon on the front, but she would also get more yard in the front because there would be a conforming front yard, right?
That is true.
And she would get more yard in the back because there would be a conforming rear yard.
Yes.
So the building would stop more or less along the line of Michelle's building line here, there would be more green space at the rear of her property, rear of the Esplanade property.
Uh, presumably, even though her property doesn't have any green.
Well, there would be a rear yard.
Yes.
And there's no rear yard now, there's a nonconforming rear yard.
Hmm, there is a rear yard, but it is nonconforming, yes.
It's nonconforming, and the front yard is nonconforming.
Yes.
Are you familiar with the Florida Planner's Handbook that I reviewed with Mr. Eiler?
Yes, I am.
Can we bring up my presentation? I'm sorry to do this, but it's just easier that way. Okay, now, we get to click through this. Okay, now, you agree that Section 150-092a4 provides that this ordinance does not make something conforming what was not conforming before, essentially?
Yes, I do agree.
And you also saw my line of questioning about the Florida Planner's Handbook, which says, as a guidance to Florida planners, it can't be a self-imposed hardship, the applicant did not bring the burden upon himself or herself through some action.
Correct.
But instead, the burden has been imposed upon them, you agree with that?
Yes.
And consequence, the variance should not be nonconforming, nor should it be used to allow a nonconforming land use or parcel to continue, you see that?
Yes.
So the recommendation here regarding nonconforming uses and buildings is that, remember, for a legal nonconforming situation to occur, the use or lot must be nonconforming and legal at the time the zoning ordinance was first adopted or later amended, anything else is a zoning violation, you see that?
I do.
Mr. Uribe asked you about, or mentioned in his colloquy about how you could have zoning changes that create nonconformities, that's right.
He did mention that, and it does happen.
You could have an ordinance change that creates a nonconformity.
Mm-hmm.
But that didn't happen here, there was no ordinance change, there was no rezoning of these properties.
No.
That's all that I have, thank you.
I just want to ask one quick follow-up question, and, and just to note on the properties that are, the other properties that we showed that were, uh, created through waivers of plat, if all of those properties were constructed, the corner, the corner properties, the houses built after the waiver of plat, all the zoning requirements would, uh, would need to be met, correct, including front setback, rear setback, side yard setbacks?
Yes.
Correct. So if you, but if you have a situation where you already have a house, it, you, you're left with the nonconformities that we see at 200 North Esplanade.
That certainly could happen, I think that, what I would say, if I could look at the, like, language here is that, it says the use or lot must be nonconforming and legal, the lot is legal, the lot complies with the code.
And, and was the, to your knowledge, was the house at the time that the waiver of plat happened, was it legal? Was it, had it been constructed legally?
I, I, I don't.
Do you have any reason to believe it wasn't?
I, I don't have any reason to believe.
Thank you.
Yeah, just a little bit on recross, uh, going back to the Wells' letters. Why did Wells require demolition of the accessory building?
Why did he require, um, because it was too close to the property line?
To achieve a setback?
To achieve any kind of setback.
Setback, correct, right.
It was like one, one and a half foot, I think.
And then, in this diagram, Wells suggests, well, you could also treat Falcon as the front, but there are these Xs here, and these Xs here, and we discussed this at the Board of Adjustment, and you agreed that those Xs suggest areas to be demolished to provide conforming setbacks if Falcon was the front, you remember that?
Yeah, I do.
Thank you. One last question. With the exception of the accessory building, this part of the house where I'm pointing to, that X, that was not demolished, was it?
It was not.
And this area up here, that was not demolished, was it?
That is correct.
Thank you.
I have nothing further, but I would like to call very quickly, and I'm, I think I've only got three questions or so for, uh, Ulysses.
One second, let me just organize myself real quick, and I'm gonna only have one, no, no, I already gave, I have one quick question for Ulysses. One quick one. Okay, um, hello, Ulysses, um, can you please state your name?
Okay, Ulysses Fernandez.
And, Ulysses, what is your position, uh, with the city of Miami Springs?
I've been the building official here for 10 years now.
Okay, and do you have any special training or licensing in building and construction industry?
I have a general contractor's license, yes.
Okay, how long have you been in this construction industry?
Uh, 25 years, a little over 25 years.
Okay. I'm going to ask you to look at the 2004 building permit, which you have, and which opposing counsel also has, I trust. And on the first page, on the cover, the building permit has some information that says, "Application description, addition of carport or garage," near the top, do you see that? On the top of the first page, the very, the cover page.
On the plans?
No, 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 on the, on the cover page, on the, on the, the main, first cover page.
Okay, yes.
Like, right, right, like, the fifth line down, it says, "Application description," you see that?
Yes.
Okay, and you see it says, "Addition of carport or garage?"
Yes.
Okay, and then if you go down a little further where it says, "Structure information," and it says, "Other structural info," or "Other struct info," and it says, "Rear/yard ACCYBLDG."
Yes.
Let me ask you, where does that information come from in terms of appearing on this sheet? Who gives that information to put on this permit?
Typically, it's by the contractor or the homeowner.
So that is not a, this is not a, a category or a categorization or characterization that's made by the city?
No.
Okay. Let me ask you also, where it says, "Unit charge," where it says, "Canopies and concrete patios," just about halfway down the page.
Yeah.
See it?
That's it.
Does that determine how you review this permit?
Uh, not really.
Okay, is that also information that might come from the applicant?
It might come from the applicant.
Okay, and then, the last thing I want to ask you is, over here on the, um, on the routing form, which is page number four, where we have all the, um, we have all the review, review required, approved, disapproved, and all the lines for the different trades, you see that?
Yes.
Okay. Is it? Do you, do you see any of them showing review required? Are any of them marked review required?
No.
But still, we see an approval from structural and building, correct?
Yes.
Okay. In your experience, does a permit like this, does it go and see somebody to check for zoning, for compliance with setbacks?
Yeah, absolutely. And I think this is just a, something that we have in the office. I don't think this is a formal document. This is something that...
But, but it indicates...
That the lady's using the office to route.
Let me ask you, in 2000, well, do you know whether in 2004 there was a separate zoning official reviewing these permits?
Yeah, back then.
Could, have you, have you ever seen in other cities where the building official takes that responsibility?
Of course.
And if he did, would you have to sign it twice?
Not necessarily. I mean, I've signed for a structure sometimes.
Okay.
I don't sign it on his, you know, on his...
You don't, you don't sign it on his line? So, with your, with your signature, once you, the building official, feel that it's, once you, the building official, feel that it is appropriately reviewed and done, this is issued?
Yes.
I think for the moment, I have nothing.
All right, Mr. Fernandez, good seeing you again.
Likewise.
Question about the 2004 building permit description. There's this line of questioning about, well, the applicant may have filled in that information, but we don't know who filled that information out, do we?
Well, we want to accept it if they don't fill it out.
Right. And so, does the city simply take the applicant's word at face value and say, "Okay, you filled it out, I'll go with it"?
When it gets to the plans processing or the inspectors at the job site, that's when we make the determination. But you would... Clerks don't make that determination.
But somebody in that department would have to review that and determine whether the description was accurate or not.
Eventually, if it lands on my desk, yes.
Eventually. When, when would that occur? What's the eventually here? What's the checkpoint?
If there's something, if there's a question by a contractor or a question by another plans processor.
Before the permit is issued, it would be reviewed?
Sorry to say.
You don't think they would review for zoning before issuing a permit?
For zoning, for review for zoning? Yes, definitely. Of course, I mean, for exterior structures, yes.
And the description of the project influences how it complies with zoning?
Say that again?
The description of the project influences how it would comply with zoning?
Well, the plans is what I consider to be.
And so, here, we have a description of a rear yard on the face of the building permit. This is not an application. It's the building permit.
Yes.
That's the end stage. It's issued to the property owner. So, we also talked about that routing sheet and the stamps on the plans, that there's no signature for zoning approval. You weren't around in 2004, so you don't know that it was approved by zoning or not.
No, but we have the same, a similar process. And a lot of times, I'll forget to sign the routing sheet. And the permit gets issued without me signing the routing sheet because it's not a requirement for us.
And how about the plans themselves? You just would forget to sign for zoning?
These plans have been scanned. I don't have the original plans. Sometimes we stamp in the back.
Right. But these, the stamp here on page five, for example, it's missing a zoning signature.
Correct, but...
And the one on page...
Sometimes it's stamped on the back and doesn't get scanned. So, I don't know, I don't have the original plans.
Well, your city attorney gave us these documents. This is the best evidence we have. Page six, there's no signature for zoning.
Page six. Which is, which page is that?
The sketch of survey.
I think that's five.
Or, or five, sketch of survey.
Yeah.
So, Mr. Fernandez, last few questions. Are you the zoning official for Miami Springs? So, the discussion about other cities doesn't really apply here. This is Miami Springs.
As regards to what?
As regards to this permit application. You're not the zoning official.
Not right, not today.
Who, no, but not...
But this wasn't approved?
Not ever. You weren't ever the zoning official. And in 2004, who approved it for zoning?
I wasn't here.
You don't have any evidence as to who approved this for zoning?
Not at this point, but I could probably get it for you tomorrow.
But there's no evidence here before us today as to who approved this application for zoning?
No.
No. Thank you.
Mayor and counsel, the building permit that we've been talking about is, was already in the record. We were able to locate it. It's under Exhibit A, Tab 9, on page 21 of 341, for those following along.
Thank you, sir. I don't know if there's redirect or...
No, the only thing I want to ask you is, if you turn to page, you go to the plan, which says, "Diaz Residence by Ram Engineering." You see it?
Yes.
That aluminum structure is attached, or appears attached to the house where it says, "Existing Residence," next to it, right? Hatched out.
Yep.
That's not detached.
No, it's attached.
Okay. And let me ask you one more thing. Once the permits are issued, the city of Miami Springs sent out an inspector to review it? The work that's been done?
Yes.
Would they check for, that everything was built according to those specs of those plans?
Well, they should be.
Thank you very much.
Just a couple more questions. Mr. Fernandez, when did the inspector go out to review this structure?
Typically...
No, no, when did they? Not typically, when did they?
I don't have that information.
You don't know?
I don't have this, no.
You don't know they actually went out and reviewed this for zoning? You don't have any evidence?
I don't have that information.
Thank you.
Would, would this permit be considered finalized and closed if the inspector didn't go out?
No. They have, they have to go out.
But you don't know that they did go out?
I wasn't here.
Thank you.
Nothing further.
I'd like to give a very brief encapsulation of what we've seen. Just 15 minutes. We have two diagrams that explain the entire story. It's right there. You can build within the white either way. Michelle, if you could lower that one and put the one behind it. You have an option. You choose, as the property owner, which square do you want? Which rectangle do you want? If you want to keep the house, you choose the front being Esplanade. You're constrained to that buildable area. If you want to tear down the house, you choose the lower one. Now, you have bigger setbacks, but you're stuck with the rear yard being at the back of that lot. What we've, what's happened here is that we have somebody who, for whatever reason, I'm not ascribing motive, I'm explaining what happened, through whatever reason, has gotten two things. One more than they're entitled to. They've got the setbacks for Esplanade remaining non-conforming because they like the way the house looks. And now, they're building an addition into the rear yard, which would not have been allowed had that house been demolished. They're having their cake, and they're eating it too. What does the record show? We have letters from Dave Wells saying, "You cannot create non-conformities." You can't do that. Don't do it. Pick. I'm not saying which one to do, just pick one. A or B? They picked A. They demolished the accessory structure in part. They did not demolish the house. Ms. Vargas testified, they did not demolish the house. They demolished the accessory structure to provide an accessory setback. They chose to leave the house where it was. And now, we have years later, an applicant coming and saying, "I like the house, I want to make an addition to it." Their consultant putting something on a sheet that's not correct. And unfortunately, the city did not catch it. And we're stuck in this situation where we have construction into a required rear yard. We have a description in the demolition permit for the accessory structure as it being in the rear yard. We have a description in the 2004 permit as it being in the rear yard. And the city is saying to us, "We don't know. We can't tell you what happened, we weren't around." But we do know, because we have the letters. And what we do know is that whatever happened in 2004 was not approved by zoning. No zoning approval. Yet, the city is arguing that that 2004 approval somehow now is binding on 2024. What we're arguing is that the 1984 approval, which was approved by zoning, which did have conditions attached, which is recorded in the public records, which has a memorandum referencing the file. And that file contains a fully integrated, comprehensive whole of documents showing the setbacks had to be satisfied. And so, the applicant here could have very easily said, "Forget 1984. I'm tearing it down, I'm building it new. It's a vacant lot. Our expert agrees, their expert agrees. You can have the bottom setbacks if you tear it down. But if you choose to keep it, you're stuck with what was approved in '84." And that means either going in and getting variances from the Board of Adjustment and getting city council approval to modify those plat conditions, or dispensing with that and building new. All of the evidence the city has shown is based on pure conjecture and speculation. There's no documentary proof that refutes any of our allegations. We're focused on documents, they're focused on theories. We're focused on proof, they're focused on, "We don't know." I agree, they don't know. We do. We know exactly what happened here. So, what's the remedy? Tear it down? No. Send them back to the Board of Adjustment to legalize their lot. Tell them, "You've built in a required setback. Go now and get your variances. Have a hearing. See if the Board of Adjustment would approve your variances." Why do we want that? Because then, we actually have notice and process. Then, we actually have the ability to go back to the Board of Adjustment and explain why, or perhaps not, the variances should or should not be granted. That's what should happen under your code. Send it to the proper board for a proper review with notice to the neighbors. And instead, we've had to come back out here and do this entire process, which has taken us time, money, effort, just to try to get the city to adhere to their process. I would ask that you consider this. I know we've been through a hearing before. We're not asking that you tear it down. We're asking that you send it back. Have the Board of Adjustment look at it. Either way, we have a record, we have expert testimony, and I am convinced that we've proven our case. Thank you all for your time.
I'm just gonna go ahead and say this. If you believe that Mr. Wells had the ability to do this in the first place in 1984, then by code, if you're relying on a code that does not limit a future zoning official, from undoing that. And when a new plan comes in, whether it be the 2004 plan, which it's in the record, it clearly, as you heard from the building official, would have gotten inspections. Maybe it was inspected by the same building official. Happened to be David Wells back then was also the zoning official. Otherwise, the letters he wrote wouldn't be worth anything if he didn't have the zoning authority, right? Which they say he confirmed. We, unfortunately, I don't have that information, but the fact that this is in the record and it shows up as a permit in this file issued and closed is indication that it was checked out and that it was. And by the way, it is consistent with the side setback. It would not be consistent if it were the rear. So, if you want to believe that he had the authority to do it, fine. What you have to also then believe is that that changed in 2004, and that is how this property has been since then. And whatever happened with the setbacks, whatever was enforced, there were these drawings, there were a ton of other stuff in the file. Not everything got done, but we have what we have today. Okay? And what we have today and what was approved is a side setback. And it's not a side setback that's any worse than what anyone else in Miami Springs gets. What we have is an owner who spent a lot of money in reliance on the city's word, on their permit that was issued, that is consistent with how it was treated going back to 2004. At least, we can cut it off there. If, if we want to admit that everything Mr. Machado says is right, it gets him to 2004 and no further. So, board members, the board of, sorry, council members, the Board of Adjustment got it right. You all got it right when you affirmed. That's the right decision. This is, this challenge is timely, is not timely. It opens a can of worms. It sets a really bad precedent for the city. You should deny this appeal. And I would ask that you do that. Thank you.
Mayor and counsel, as I said at the beginning of the meeting, there's a proposed resolution for you after you've done your deliberations. I just want to hand it, you can pass one to Chris as well. It's effectively what was already on the agenda. It's just been slightly updated, but the substance is almost, almost the same. As you'll see from the title that's before you, tonight, you are sitting as a Board of Appeals, and you are either affirming or reversing the resolution that already affirmed a recommendation of the city's Board of Adjustment to deny an appeal by Ms. Ferreira. Tonight's decision is not about whether there are future variances or future hearings. It's whether you are affirming or reversing a decision that was already made. And that, that was what the appeal started for, right? It was, the, the appeal was, do you, it challenged the administrative official's decision. That administrative official's decision was affirmed by a Board of Adjustment. You affirmed it previously. And now, after considering the, the testimony and evidence that you've received tonight, as well as the benefit of what's already in the record, you are charged with either affirming or reversing. So, you are weighing what has been presented and determining if the, the decision should or should not be upheld.
Because we have people that are here that weren't here at the beginning, I'd like to open up for public comment again. Is that okay?
That's fine, mayor.
Okay. So, if there's anybody online at this point, if we've gained viewership throughout the last three hours, or if anybody, would anybody like to speak? Open it up for public comment? Nope? Okay. All right, we'll close public comment. Does, do we have a motion up here to either affirm or reverse? And then, we can follow that up with discussion?
No?
How about just a discussion? I'll open it up.
So, the way, thank you for your time. Both of you guys did a great presentation. Thank you for the presentation and for being so detailed. And thank you to the witnesses for coming out. From the way I'm seeing it, this, this house was built in the, in 1947. And the lot was in certain direction. Then, in the eighties, the lot was split. The front of the house, the property, the front of the lot changed. And you can't force now, you know, the house to be torn down to make it fit the current situ, like the situation, like to make the side, the front and the front, the side. So, you know, that's what I've picked up from this whole presentation, so. Joseph Dion. Was that clear? Yeah?
Councilman Fabian Perscrespo. Also, thank you for both parties for being very compelling arguments. I'm sorry we're at this stage. Unfortunately, to the two neighbors who have to now coexist with each other, I don't know how that's even going to be possible. I live in a corner lot. I've had discussions with the city before as what is front, what is side? So, I understand that argument, and I couldn't, it didn't make sense to me. That, my front is front. No, that's your side. So, but at the end of the day, I had to respect the Building Department's decision when I wanted to extend my fence. And I requested a variant because that's what I needed to do. Again, it didn't make sense to me. It didn't make sense to me. How can this be the front of my house? You're telling me that's the front. So, I understand the argument, right? I want to, can I ask the appellate questions? Ms. Ferreira, what is transactional real estate law?
So, I don't go to court? I don't go to court. I have a lot of phone calls, and I sit in front of a computer, and I type contracts, lots of contracts, different types of contracts, purchase and sale agreements, whether it's, and I practice commercial real estate law. So, city could sell this building, or a parking lot, or a restaurant, or a strip mall, hotels, shopping centers. So, all different kinds of properties are bought and sold. I handle that. I handle leasing. So if the city leases property from a private owner, I would handle that lease. I'd draft that lease for either party. Loans, mortgages that you might think of, so.
So you're surrounded, you're surrounded by this?
I, I, I don't fight, I make deals.
But you're surrounded in this world, I mean, this is not my world, but this is your world, right?
Zoning is not my world, that would be definitely a subspecialty within real estate that I don't practice.
And you said you purchased a house in 2012?
I did.
Okay. You said you were, the permit for the construction next door was issued in 2022?
December.
Okay. And so if I got, wrote this correctly, so two years passed, had passed before you-
I didn't know that permit was issued. If you look at the records after I got them, the plans hadn't been approved until, I want to say something like May of 2023. So, just because the permit was issued doesn't mean that work was authorized to be done. They, they didn't get their plans approved until later. I think what they did was demolition first.
And you heard the demolition, I'm assuming. You must have heard something.
I mean, the house needed to be demolished, it was-
Well, that's-
I, I think they did what, I mean, I would have done more, I would have literally demolished the house. But certainly taking it down to the studs like they did was, was the right thing to do in terms of redoing that house. I'm not opposed to them remodeling their house, I'm absolutely in favor of it. What my problem is, is your front yard is your neighbor's front yard. My backyard should be my neighbor's backyard. My neighbor has structures, big structures, in the backyard. So if the footprint were the same, we can have the same footprint. And yes, I'm not complaining about a side yard setback, that's not what I'm complaining about. I'm complaining about a structure being in the rear yard.
You, you said you're, you're in favor of your neighbors remodeling their house, right?
Sure, I have no, no, we're all entitled to do that, I have no problem with that. And I don't have anything personally against my neighbor.
Right. At the, at the Board of Adjustment meeting though, you, you called the addition intrusive and obnoxious.
It is.
How's a structure obnoxious?
Stand in my backyard and you'll see for yourself.
Neighbor could be obnoxious, but does a structure is obnoxious?
It is obnoxious. They're literally on top of me, so stand in my backyard and you'll feel the same way. So I'm expressing to you how I feel. That's-
I totally understand, thank you, I, I understand your feelings. You also described the terrace as a monstrosity, so, so, but is the terrace complete? You can see it, is that, you're in visual, I mean, is it really, really-
I see it now, yeah, when I took down-
The arecas.
-the old fence to replace it, yeah.
Okay, and so, you took down the, the foliage, the foliage was there?
There was arecas, yeah.
There were arecas, right, and they grow pretty tall, so you took those down. Why?
They were leaning against the old fence, so to put the new fence in, I had to do that.
Is the fence on your property, signed up property?
It's my fence.
It's your fence, okay. So you have the option of also replacing the hedges or arecas?
Sure, I can block all the light.
Okay, but, I mean, so what I'm getting at here is, I don't see winners in this.
I agree.
And I see a lot of animosity between two houses. Is there anything that the city can do to help, help you feel better about the construction next door?
I've given that a lot of thought. And I think what I had asked my neighbor to do was plant hedges. But frankly, that also leaves me with not a great result. Because once I took down, and you see in the pictures that I submitted in the Board of Adjustment hearing, there's tons of pictures. There actually used to be an aluminum, you know, sort of pergola, if you will, next to that same area on my house, which also is illegal. I took that down. And once I took that down, and then I also took down the arecas, you know, to redo the fence.
I'm sorry, what was illegal on, on your side?
My, yeah, it was like an aluminum, yeah, it was an aluminum shed.
Okay.
Just for reference, there's a Board of Adjustment evidence binder that we submitted. On Tab Seven, there are a series of photographs. You will see the new addition, right? The monstrosity, the obnoxious addition, however you want to describe it. The back of it is the metal pergola being removed.
From her property?
Yes.
Okay.
So when I took that down and the arecas and stuff to redo the fence, you know, the amount of light and air, like my backyard just looks so much, you know, bigger, airier, lighter. And so I don't, I don't want to do that, I don't want to have, you know, the shadow hanging over my backyard and my pool.
The shadow of the construction next door?
The shadow of trees, the shadow of the building, because the sun comes from east to west, so, yeah.
And from what I could tell, the, the building, the addition, the remodeling, I think they raised the roof line, is that correct?
Yeah.
Did they, is that what happened here? Which they have every right to do? And they have a permit to raise the-
Yeah, it's taller than mine, I don't think there's any issue with height that we're disputing at all.
Well, some ma, some neighbors may have an issue with, well, their roof is higher than mine. Why is that? Is that, is that your issue?
No, my issue is their proximity to my backyard. And their structure intrusively, you know, overlooking my, my backyard. So. Well, yeah, yeah, I mean, it's a complete open terrace. I mean, if that were enclosed, even though I wouldn't like it, it would definitely be better. You know, if people aren't sitting there looking into my backyard, watching me take a swim.
Is that what you think is happening, or will happen?
Oh, it is happening.
Oh, it is happening?
I mean, when the workers are there, like I'm in plain sight, it's, I feel exposed. I don't want to go in my backyard.
Well, I'm sorry that you feel exposed, but, but there's nothing to, to assume that when the construction's done, the neighbors will be looking into your yard.
It's a terrace, they're going to go and hang out there.
Yeah, that's what terraces, do you not hang out in your terrace too?
In the side yard.
But you hang out in your terrace too, right?
My terrace is the next to theirs.
That's the entire issue, right? It's a, it's a terrace in a side yard for zoning purposes, but it's the rear of the house, right? It's a rear yard terrace in a side side. This entire thing is flipped upside down, right? Have your cake, eat it too, have a rear yard terrace and a side yard. Now you're seven and a half feet away instead of 25. What's going on?
I have no further questions for now, thank you.
Okay. Vice Mayor, did you have anything you wanted to add to the discussion?
I've heard all the arguments and they're obviously compelling on both sides, it's an understatement. But I'm ready to go straight to the vote.
Well, we don't have a motion yet. I'd, I'd like to make some comments before I, I tried to entertain a motion, but we had our discussion. I just want to say, from my point of view, I've closely considered the arguments, I appreciate the arguments that have been made on both sides. Compelling arguments have been made on both sides. But I don't think that the arguments have been compelling enough to cause me to overturn my personal vote when we previously voted to affirm, affirm the Board of Adjustments. And, and I feel that, you know, I, I don't feel like I have been swayed in terms of, of my opinion about what the Board of Adjustments recommended, which was to deny the appeal and to also uphold the determination of staff. So that's just, you know, where I'm at after having closely considered, and again, compelling arguments on both sides, but, but I don't feel like enough to have me overton, overturn my vote previously to affirm the Board of Adjustment's recommendation. So, having said that, we've all had an opportunity to discuss, do I have a motion to either affirm or reverse the Board of Adjustment recommendation?
Is that a motion to affirm?
The Board of Adjustment recommendation to deny the appeal, correct? And do we have a second?
I have a second.
Okay. If there's no further discussion, call the vote.
And I just want to put on the record that Councilman Orlando Lamas is not at tonight's meeting. He was on the Board of Adjustment-
At the time.
-prior to becoming a council member. So in an effort to keep both boards separate for purposes of this process, he has sat out of this evening's meeting. At our-
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Santin?
Yes.
Councilman Dion?
Yes.
Councilman Perez-Crespo?
Yes.
Mayor Fahet?
Yes.
The motion carries four to zero.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you to everyone, with that-
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We adjourn this meeting at 9:36.